Doorway clear. I mean, the police can stay there, that's okay. That's all right. All right, I'd like to call the meeting of December 8th, 2015 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco Hart-Hochkis, Maria Rouse White, Mayor Snyder.
Here. And item number one?
Employee recognition service award pins.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Each month, we like to recognize employees who achieved certain milestones of service with the City of Santa Barbara. I'd like to read for the record some of those who've achieved those milestones, and then two of the employees are here to receive their pins in person. First, with five years of service to the City of Santa Barbara, Jeanne Darbison, accounting assistant with the Finance Department; Federico Hernandez, custodian, Public Works Department; Margaret Heinrich, water reclamation cross-connection specialist, Public Works Department; Ryan Quiroga, Water Treatment Plant Operator 3, Public Works Department; and Randy Rouse, with five years of service, Mayor and City Council; Anthony Bowman, with 10 years of service, Anthony Bowman, Assistant Planner, Community Development Department; Blake Burgard, Police Officer, Police Department; Jose Cosio, Streets Maintenance Worker 2, Public Works Department; Tina Diaz, Administrative Specialist, Public Works Department; Baldomero Garcia, Custodian, Public Works Department; with 15 years of service, Jose Rojas, Equipment Operator, Parks and Recreation Department; with 20 years of service, Jason Valenzuela, Custodial Supervisor, Public Works Department; and with 25 years of service, Rodolfo Villanueva, Water Treatment Chief Operator, Public Works Department; and then the two employees who are here to receive their pins and resolutions in person, with 25 years of service, Susan Gonzalez, Human Resources Manager, Administrative Services Department; and Patricia Vogel, Engineering Technician 2, at the Public Works Department.
Well, I will say, Councilmember Rouse, it was the most unusual recruitment process for you five years ago, but time flies, so.
I'd like to thank everybody who showed up tonight to honor me. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's good. That's all right, good. Let's start with Susan Gonzalez. Come on up, and I know you already have your pin, you have it on. That's fantastic. Great. Susie Gonzalez began her career with the City of Santa Barbara in 1986 as a senior clerk in what was then called the Personnel Division. After resigning for a year following the birth of her daughter, she returned to the city in December of 1990. So while we're recognizing her for 25 years today, she's actually worked for this organization for more than 28 cumulative years. Susie's had a successful career with the city. She was promoted to Personnel Technician in 1999 and Human Resources Analyst in 2004. During that same time, she put herself through college, earning her BA degree. In February of 2015, Susie was promoted to Human Resources Manager, which is the position she holds today. She oversees a staff of nine employees in the Human Resources Division, responsible for supporting departments with professional services related to employee recruitment and selection, performance management, health and welfare benefits, and training for over 1,500 regularly and hourly employees. She's received numerous commendations over the years for her exceptional customer service and remarkable work ethic, and has been particularly recognized for her outstanding support to the Police Department as their primary human resources liaison. She's a joy to work with and has the genuine respect and affection of all her coworkers. Susie's married to Henry and lives in Santa Barbara. She's devoted to her daughter Samantha and to her parents, who also live nearby. A lively extended family in Santa Barbara keeps her busy, and she's a terrific cook. It's, Susie, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the City of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on your admirable achievement in a profession I love dearly. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much, Madam Mayor and Mayor, members of the council. It's truly been an honor and a privilege just to be part of this organization. Human Resources has been an amazing experience, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the HR staff. There are an amazing group of individuals that are extremely talented and are dedicated to this organization, and together, we make a great HR team. So I just especially want to say thank you to my HR staff. Thank you.
There you are. There's your pin.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Patricia Vogel began her career with the City of Santa Barbara as a clerk in the Engineering Department in 1990. She was quickly promoted to an Office Specialist and then a Senior Office Specialist. She was promoted to an Engineering Technician in 2001, which is the position she holds today. Currently, she supports the Wastewater Design Section, where her work is instrumental in delivering the capital improvement program and providing operation and maintenance support. Patricia continues to enhance her skills by taking courses at Santa Barbara City College. Patricia's known for her vast knowledge of various city processes and her high level of professionalism. She's been recognized on several occasions for her excellent service. She was Public Works Employee of the Month for September 2001, where she took over as Acting Clerical Coordinator for approximately two months, and again selected as Employee of the Month in August 2004 for her work on the Cater Water Treatment Plant Bathroom Remodel. I guess the water treatment plant should have a bathroom remodel. That makes sense. Okay. She also received several SWIFT Awards over the years for her extraordinary efforts in supporting her supervisors. So Patricia, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the City of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. I'm so honored to be here. When I say the word 25 years, even I can't believe it. I was actually hired originally to be a hotline operator because that was the onset of our last drought. And it turns out that I didn't take that position, but special thanks to all my work colleagues over the years, past and present. I've been a part of so many different projects in Public Works. It encompasses so many areas of this town. But actually, the most special thanks goes to my mother, who's sitting here. Raise your hand, Mom. The reason for that is because I contemplated quitting the city, and my mother said, you know what? I don't think you should just yet. If you're not sure where it's going to go, maybe you should stick there for a while. And I did. So again, thank you to all my work colleagues, and it's been an honor to be part of such an interesting and diverse staff and department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, even a number of speaker slips here. We'll start with Michael Baker, be followed by Ken Bordalapso. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs here in Santa Barbara County. I wanted to thank you personally for inviting our kids to ride on the float with you in the parade, and a very, very special thank you, the highlight for me, and I'm going to embarrass them, and I don't care, was Councilmember Greg Hart. We brought one of our members up to him, and a member was a little cold, and he said, you know, I've got something for you. He reached in his pocket, and he pulled out a Santa hat that lit up, which was pretty cool. And I'll tell you what, Kevin kept lighting that thing up all night. He had a great time, so thank you again for doing that. And just wanted to let you know that I do have a couple reports here for you to share with each other, an impact report in this past year and the work that we've done. We're very proud of the work that we've done over the past year, and I know we have a long way to go, but things are going in the right direction, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your continued support. Without your support, there's no way a Boys and Girls Club could be successful, and I encourage you and anybody that's watching at home, it is the end of the year, and this is a great time for those folks that are thinking about making those end-of-the-year gifts. This is a great time to support charities like the Boys and Girls Clubs or any other youth service organizations, so I want to encourage each and every one of you to do that. So thank you very much.
Ken Bordalapso, be followed by Laura Capps.
I'm here to talk about the project that's going on at 11:30, Punta Gorda, which you're all aware of, and you even got a letter back from Das Williams. I'm asking you, as the city leaders, to address the issue that we need to change the state law regarding trailer park conversions. The issue is brought to our attention by the project going on at 11:30, Punta Gorda. I am one of the concerned citizens who has contacted Das Williams regarding this. I am one of the people that he referred to that hadn't got back to him. The reason I hadn't got back to him was, first of all, he sends me the law as it's written, and then a proposal to change the law, which is 15 questions, which is a little bit out of my realm. And I was hoping that you could address this issue on a state level, because that's what needs to happen, is the law needs to change. There's four more trailer parks in the area. One is just across the creek from this one, and it's right borders on the freeway, borders on the creek. And as you know, environmentally, they're in violation of all the city rules as far as the creek, being too close to the creek and the freeway. The project is only one of possible four more trailer park conversions, and actually, the manufactured homes have already gone into one of the other trailer parks. They're just on an individual basis, not on mass, like this guy has done. So we need to act on this immediately, because one of the trailer parks is pretty much in disarray, and it could be taken over by a developer probably pretty easily. I hope there's none in the audience here. I don't want to let them know. Anyway, that's what I'm asking, and I would thank you if any effort you could put to staff.
Thank you. Now, we sent a letter, and if you want to meet with Nina Johnson in the office and let her know of your interest, so we can keep you in the loop of the conversations we're having, that would be great.
Leave my name at the office, is that?
Yeah, with Nina Johnson.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right. Laura Capps will be followed by Howard Green.
Thank you, and I'm joined here by Nancy Weiss, Director of Nutrition Services at the School District, and also by Fran Foreman at CAC, and we are acknowledging of Mark Alvarado of the city, and also Terry Brown of the city, and really here to say thank you and report on some good news on childhood hunger. I work with the organization called No Kid Hungry, and they focus on summer, because summer, as you all know, is when childhood hunger really spikes. Kids are out of school, don't get the wonderful food, don't always get the wonderful food that Nancy is serving them throughout the year, and Fran's programs. And so, we bound together the last couple of years, a lot of support from the mayor, a lot of you have shown up numerous times to our concerts. We try to show kids that this food is good, the free meals are in 40 places throughout the county, and that every child can qualify, they just have to show up. And we only know that about 20% of kids who rely on free and reduced meals during the year actually get that food in the summer, yet they're completely entitled to get that food. So, good news, we rose 33% this last summer, and we just wanted to say thank you, and we want to keep going. That means that this last summer, we served, or they served, they're really the ones that are doing the hard work, 211,000 meals. The year before was 160,000 meals. So we're going to keep going and try to get that number up, and just wanted to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. I want to thank our city staff, too, for making that work. It's a great partnership. Howard Green will be followed by Reverend Alan Hayes.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and Mayor. I observed that last month you passed a new set, a resolution for a new set of procedural rules here, and I read the parliamentary document by the judge in Yellow County and discovered that he proposes or requires that a motion be placed before the council has its post-public hearing discussion. That's not been your practice in the past, and I think that your current practice is very beneficial, because it allows the council to understand points of view and to shape, then, a motion, as opposed to the procedure where the motion comes before the discussion. Since many things tend to trickle down, I would hope this be memorialized in some way so that any subordinate commissions and committees know of the acceptance of the current practice rather than that this included in the new rules, new parliamentary rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Alan Hayes will be followed by Tom Widrow.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here in representation of your local homeless community. I am a street minister who's been working here on your streets for the last two years, and I actually am following up the last little message I shared with you when you were offering basically a chance to enter into a dialogue with us in a greater way than before, and we really were appreciating that as a group, I have to say. I can speak for us that way. There is one concern, though. I mentioned that it would help for you to learn our language, because we're so different and so, our frame of reference is so different from your own. This is merely a follow-up to that in the sense that I'm asking you at this time, because I believe you have a really rare opportunity to turn this around and really create a meaningful dialogue with us, and include us in city proceedings, et cetera, to the degree that we're not marginalized as previously. I'm experiencing this all the time on your streets now. There's a great degree of, let's shove them off. It reminds me a lot of the way that the natives were treated when they kind of were marginalized off the map, so to speak, or into reservations. The reason I'm bringing this up is because this is a great opportunity for you, as the last speaker said, to leave a legacy for future groups, to, you know, City Council and all in concern, to coordinate and network better together to understand your homeless community, and that means, get your minds around it a little bit.
Be to wind up, please.
Before you go to sleep, just think, what is it like to be out there on my streets when they only have one porta potty for the whole side?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Widrow will be followed by Nancy McCready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good to see you. Tom Widrow, City Watch. We haven't been watching that much lately. I've been helping to take care of my 101-year-old grandmother, who, we flew from Florida all the way out to California, and now she's doing great, and saw her for Thanksgiving, but rest assured, we're back in action. And I just wanted to thank you all on behalf of the organization that I represent, despite occasionally having political differences, as watchdog groups certainly do, even with those who are philosophically in line. Each and every one of you have treated us with dignity, particularly me and Grace. Welcome me into your offices, had substantive discussions about issues, read, I assume, the editorials we've written or listened on the radio, and I'm grateful, and so is the group of folks that support good governance and sensible governance. We're all very appreciative. And some of the wins that you've had this year, I know maybe it's too soon to start summing it up, we're second week in December here. You did a great thing on RVs in the neighborhoods. I think that was smart to regulate that, and you really listened well to the people of this community. The golf course maintenance issue, I know you had a four-to-three vote on that, but I think that was wise, and in the end, it gives a chance to save the golf course, so that was good. In 2016, one of the things that City Watch would be interested in following is that you get to some sort of vote on infrastructure, how it's going to be funded, and, you know, what's actually going to be funded through a tax on infrastructure to fix our roads. And I know the mayor has been concerned with that, and we spoke in your office about that, and, you know, hopefully, we can resolve some differences and get something on the ballot that makes sense. So, once again, congratulations on a good 2015, and hopefully, a better one next year.
Nancy McCready will be followed by Bob Hanson.
A week ago, I went down to Verizon. My phone took a dive, and I had to replace it. Unfortunately, I looked at the time, I was 20 minutes early, and boy, I had to go to the bathroom so bad, and there was no place around the area where I could go. So I ran over to Lot 10, which is the public restroom, as we have a sign on State and Deliara, and a sign in front of the Habitat that points to that public restroom, and to find out, it is no longer a public restroom. Now, I think it's very embarrassing to put people towards a porta potty that was about the messiest I've ever seen in my life, and I had to use that, and it was pretty gross. It made me cry. Anyway, I also wanted to say that I got a copy of the Continuum of Care application, and it's been filled out by the county and the various numbers of people who are sending this off to federal government. In 1C-6, it says, "Select the specific strategies implemented by the COC to ensure that homelessness is not criminalized in the COC's geographic area." And what it says in answer is that it has engaged and educated the local policymakers. Now, who has engaged and educated you people? Because I see you still have to criminalize the homeless. Thank you.
Bob Hanson will be followed by Richard Robinson, and the final speaker will be Courtney Caswell-Patton.
Hi, I was supposed to talk with you at 1:30 today, but didn't have it, so I guess we're talking now. I know a few weeks ago, you guys talked about these new signs, we're going to spend a half a million dollars. If you take this and put it on a pole, that'd be on the bottom of that sign, it catches people's eyes. So you could sit there and have something like this, catch people's eyes, and save a half a million dollars. This costs $6. So anyway, this is a quote from Nelson Mandela, "People learn to hate, but they also can learn to love, and it's better for your heart," because even homeless people know that people hate them. And it would be nice if you made a proclamation to say, stop this hate. I was at the parade, 90% of the people at the parade are Latino. It's amazing. Everybody's out of touch. I mean, this is not just rich, white people that rule this town, which it is, but it's sad that that's what we have. So I wrote with chalk on the ground, "Open the winter shelter, Santa Barbara's mayor." Well, they came out with a broom and water and washed it off. But I say to you, I went to the county and asked them today, let them and the Red Cross open up a real winter shelter like they used to have it. The history of that was that Chuck Blitz, myself and a couple other people, got training from the Red Cross. We went up to Unitarian Church, that was the first winter shelter we had. It was open from December 1st to April 1st for everybody, even the homeless we don't like. You go down to Casa Esperanza, you get breathalyzed, da-da-da-da-da. So anyway, then I held on to the podium, and I said I wasn't going to let go at the county, and they arrested me. Should I do it again? It's kind of fun. It makes a point, you know what I mean? When the handcuffs go on, I said something, and you're listening then. So here goes. It's time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. You can take the tape and sit down. Thank you. Time for you to say he has to be arrested.
I'm not leaving until we get something going for this winter shelter for everybody.
Mr. Hanson, please take your seat.
I'm not going.
Please take your seat, Mr. Hanson.
Not going. They asked me if would I leave the podium at the county, I said, you got to arrest me. I'm trying to make a statement, you know?
I'm asking you if you could please take your seat.
I know it.
I'll ask you one more time to please take your seat.
No, I'm not.
Okay, then, we're going to recess until Mr. Hanson's done. Thank you.
99 Cent Store has grown in the last decade. Because of his hard work, exponentially, it's becoming, they're looking at him storing Sunday, day before yesterday, on State Street, after several years of helping Mr. Miller, the new owners there are Muslims who are not as attenuated to cleaning the store as they should, by a group of kids. I noticed them for a long time. They turned the 99-cent store at State Street into a hangout. It's a 99-cent store. It's not Saks Fifth Avenue, but there is a growing law enforcement problem you probably are aware of around that area there, and I think that, Your Honor, you should give a little bit more attention to perhaps tough love, a group of kids who are looking for a lot of attention right there at that 99-cent store. I had to kind of give a kid a nuke and say, get your gang out of here, I'm calling the police. So thank you, ma'am, very much.
Courtney, you want to come on up? There's a, actually, the lower mic right there is on, so you can use that. There you go.
I've been in Santa Barbara on and off since 1998. I was not heavily involved with the community as a city the first five years I was here because there was no necessity to. However, now, I would like to address three issues. I understand this is a sustainable community where recycling is prevalent because of not wanting to waste and because of old values from our ancestors that have taught us to be a good custodian of our things. However, people need to learn to take less cans at one time, because they are putting whatever city exists and whatever budgets you're trying to create into bankruptcy. The official DA on the website, I guess, Joyce Dudley, is circulating counterfeit money from the recycling center, and I have tried to tell people, you know, in my own way, you know, please stop doing it, and then they refuse to abide by that. If they have any trouble with the police and the police have decided to scapegoat them, that's only going to be, you know, more of a problem. The second issue I would like to address is, I feel that this city has a real problem with its police. This is a small community, and I feel that the police need to be better trained. Since 2006, I've seen more violence in this town than I saw in a 14-year living situation in a community of a similar wealth and stature on the East Coast. And I've seen violence that is of a federal nature, and I feel that justice must be carried out properly, okay? And I feel that the police are not well-trained enough to do this. So, you know, going forward, as a City Council, you need to consider all the acts of violence that you have witnessed, including the fires and vandalism and other things that, while people don't have eyes in the back of their head, I have seen, and decide either how to get more police who are better trained in investigative procedures and in sealing off crime scene procedures and things like that, because I can tell you, a lot of things have been messed up.
Thank you very much.
And it's too bad. The third thing I would like to address really quickly.
Your time's up, Ms. Casey. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I address the third thing next week? Or whenever you're...
Sure. Absolutely. Okay, that concludes public comment. We move on to the consent calendar, and you have some items to read.
Item number three, introduction of ordinance for lease agreement with Breakwater Restaurant, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance that the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a five-year lease agreement with two five-year options dated as of December 8, 2015, with Steven and Sharon D. Decker doing business as Breakwater Restaurant at an average initial base rent of $8,794.36 per month allocated seasonally for the 4,053-square-foot restaurant located at 107 Harbor Way, effective January 15, 2016. Item number six, introduction of ordinance to establish a definition for vessel for craft berthed, moored, or anchored in the Harbor District, recommending that berthed, moored, or anchored in the Harbor District, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by amending Section 17.04.010 and adding Section 17.12.050 establishing a definition of vessel for craft berthed, moored, or anchored in the Harbor District. Item number seven, amendment to Public Safety Dispatcher Recruitment Initiative Program, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution 15-089 establishing a Public Safety Dispatcher Recruitment Incentive Program, providing referral initiatives for city employees and hiring initiatives for new public safety dispatchers. Item number nine, authorization to increase of state revolving fund loan for wastewater plant upgrades to $35 million, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to amend Resolution 13-009 stating the city's intent to reimburse expenditures paid prior to either the issuance of obligations or the approval by the State Water Resources Control Board of the project funds for the secondary treatment process improvements project at El Estero Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. There was a request to, on item 14. If you can, Deborah, please read item 14.
Request to initiate expansion of residential permit parking near Santa Barbara City College.
Mr. Rouse, and then Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see Mr. Allen approaching. I would just like some clarification on the genesis of the initiative to go forth and expand that parking program. And just a little, very brief update on what it is and what it's going to mean to the residents and the reasons behind it. Mr. Allen, please.
Sure. Browning Allen, Transportation Manager in the Public Works Department, Mayor and Council. This initially came as a petition from the residents on the 4 and 500 block of La Marina, which is on the north side of Cliff Drive, to expand Area M into their neighborhood because they've experiencing city college students parking in their neighborhood. So we, as staff, took a look at that request and looked to see the impact on other streets and decided, hey, this, call a timeout and look at expanding the entire area, adding streets that may become a problem in the future because they're starting to creep into other neighborhoods near City College. So we're taking a more of a holistic approach at this point in time to give us the tools to address future problems instead of having to piecemeal and coming back to council on numerous times. So this is the beginning stage. You know, staff will go out and do a parking analysis, work with the transportation engineer to do the study to see if there really is an impact that would warrant putting no parking signs and restricting it to residents only.
Thank you. Then, as far as the future expansion then goes, is the, that's not to establish a program, that's just to make it, is that to facilitate the ability to establish a program in the future?
The way it would work is we would amend, expand the area so we wouldn't have to go through this process numerous times. So if a block face requests or has a need for permits parking, they could submit a petition, require 70% of the residents who live on that street, and they must be full-time residents. And then we would go out and do another parking analysis on that street to see if there really is a problem, and then we could go forward putting the parking restrictions on that street.
So once there's a request, and you need to make findings to determine that that's a needed program?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
It's not to this issue, but item 12 for discussion.
Oh, okay. So, Mr. White, to this issue?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. White.
Thank you. You don't have, Mr. Allen, by any chance, that map that you can put up on the screen, do you?
On the overhead.
How technical our legal counsel is here.
My trusty assistant.
You want to turn it so we could, it's kind of sideways? Thank you. There we go. Okay. I just think, Madam Mayor, that this is an important enough proposal that perhaps this will spread the word just a little bit more. In my view, this is an important adaptation step, and I appreciate that it's being initiated and hope that it does benefit the neighborhood.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on that separately? No, okay. Item 12, if you could read item 12, please.
Memorandum of Understanding with the Community Action Commission for South Coast Youth Task Force on Youth Gangs.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Yes, I would like to get, if we could, from some, a report on where we stand and what were our successes and what we still need to do, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Serano. Come on up.
Okay, well, good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, for asking to share a little bit. It's been a while since we've been here to do a formal update, and I'd actually offered for us to come back and do a formal overview. But I will share that, you know, we continue to be a convener of programs, and we're not a program operator. So we're convener of those programs that work in the south region to address youth violence, specifically youth gang violence. And with the data that we've been working with is youth, gang terms and conditions from the probation department. A lot of the other law enforcement agencies don't really track gang-specific data, or they group adults and juveniles together, or some don't track. And so the probation data is very key to us. In 2009, there were, for the whole year, unduplicated, there were 245 youth with gang terms and conditions, meaning under the court observation. In 2014, last year, that was 118. So we've seen a very drastic decrease in activity and crime and the number of youth involved. That doesn't mean it's gone away or we've completely, you know, we're in the clear, but it means that we're going in a good direction. As far as the work of collaboration, it's allowed us to apply for grants for organizations, and specifically the City of Santa Barbara to apply to state grants, CalGrip grants, gang reduction programming. There's one that was a two-year grant that we applied for that's serving 120 youth ending at the end of this month. There's another one that we submitted last summer. The rules with the state changed, and they didn't let us know, so we found out 10 days before from Chief Sanchez who sent a message. But because of coordination and because of the relationships we've established, we're able to put together a proposal in seven days, submitted to the state. And out of 48 cities throughout the state, we were funded to continue for three years that included youth employment, case management, and educational services for the target population of youth with gang terms and conditions, but also an expansion to youth in adverse situations with the school district or in the community from Carpinteria to Galida. So that's been very good. And the state kind of has told us, you know, we're surprised that, not surprised, but we acknowledge that your region's collaboration has allowed you to really have an impact of what funds you secured for resources in the area. Also, this year, it's five years that we've been working as a task force, and where we're at today is not where we were five years ago or in 2007. We've seen the decrease in youth violence, the decrease in youth in the target population, and therefore, the Steering Committee Strategies Team decided that it was time to recalibrate and really align where we need to be today, where we've been, where we're at, and where we need to go. So we're in the process of doing that right now. We're calling it Mission 2020, putting us through the year 2020. The team actually contracted with Marcelo Lopez, former city administrator here, to do that work, and he's already put together a 37-page report that we're going to share with the council later this week on the findings of interviews with stakeholders, our council and some other community members, really on the achievements, the challenges, and their gaps, and where the group of stakeholders would like to see us go in the next five years. We're working with that information to make the proposals to the Task Force Council to move the work forward in the next five years. Overall, I can share that 34 stakeholders that were interviewed, all, you know, they were asked the question, "Is it time to say mission accomplished and disband and move on from this?" And the majority, 33, said, "No, we need to keep going, otherwise we'll see the issue come back up." And there was one person who said, "You know, we've served our mission. It's time to disband." And so with that, our goal is to continue moving forward.
When do you expect to make that report to the council?
In January. So we have a Task Force Council meeting for the large group, January 13th, in the City of Carpinteria. We alternate locations, our meetings throughout the year, Carpinteria, Santa Barbara, Galida. It's an open meeting, so if anybody from the public is interested in attending, we'll be at the children's main school in Carpinteria, January 13th, Wednesday, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM.
Are you coming to council to make that same presentation?
We could definitely come back in January and to make the same presentation.
When you do, because much of, I think, an important part of your work is transitioning people from one life choice to another. Could you put some flesh on those bones and give us some specific examples? It's always hard to hear that.
Definitely. And I think, you know, I do want to say thank you to the City of Santa Barbara's employment program for really serving that population that otherwise, you know, the vulnerable population, that they've really created a safety net for the residents that are served under that program, employment program, including youth with disabilities, and they really have done a great job in doing that. So I just want to recognize their work.
Thank you very much. Mark, did you have something you needed to add?
Yeah, Mark, Mr. Alvarado, if you could do that, and congratulations earlier on the No Kid Hungry, kudos, so.
Good afternoon. Mark Alvarado, Neighborhood Nightmare Services with Parks and Recreation. Madam Mayor, Representative Hotchkiss, you know, our youth workforce training program that we partner with CAC and this whole agreement on the CalGrip has been really successful for the city as well because we've been able to diversify our employment of youth and where we're putting them within the city organization. And so we have kids now working in the water department, we have kids out on the golf course, we have kids, obviously, within parks maintenance and within our community centers. And just to give you a few numbers, in 2015, we mentored 133 kids, and out of those 133, we employed 61. Okay, so that was last fiscal year. So where we're at right now with just the CalGrip program of last year, we mentored 43 of their kids, and we employed 13 of them. And you see a little bit of, I guess, a disparity of the number of kids mentoring and the number of kids actually employed, you know? And the mantra is, "All they need is a job." Well, it's not that easy for a kid because they're dealing with a lot of different issues to get employed. There's transportation, there's just a lot of different things. So we feel we're really successful in just meeting those numbers because we are meeting what we're telling the state that we're going to serve and what we're telling you what we're going to serve when we come to you annually in budget, asking for funds to support the program. Currently, so far this year, we've mentored up to 22 kids within the CalGrip program. And for the city itself, overall, we've already employed 63 kids this year, just in the city program since July of this year. So we're, you know, we're doing pretty well, and we're really excited about the opportunity to partner, not just with CAC, but we work with probation, we work with the police department, we work with a lot of different organizations that are at the table, and I've been around for a little bit, and so I've seen collaborations. And one thing that I like about this is that everybody's at the table every month. Everybody comes and talks and gives input to ensure that we're, you know, keeping the course. And so now where we are with this Mission 2020, we're feeling really good about where we're at in terms of sustaining the health and safety of our children in our community, especially those that are most vulnerable.
Thank you very much. Please let me know if I can help in some way.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great news. Great news. Okay, so do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Moved by, Mario, second by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous. And then report from the ordinance committee. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ordinance committee met today to discuss two items. One was about the, some cleanup language about prohibiting parking over 72 hours in inoperable vehicles, easy for me to say, in city-owned parking lots, and that passed along to council, along with an ordinance allowing taxi cab loading, unloading, in green, yellow, and white zones, which before was not addressed in the ordinance. So that was cleaned up, and will be coming forward to council for.
Great, thank you. Okay, item number 17.
Appointments to city advisory groups.
Okay, before we get started, just first to thank everyone who has applied, and in some cases, we do have more people than positions available, so that might mean we need to take a vote on those, but we can also vote by acclamation if we choose if that fits. So I'm just going to go through the committee names, and we've done this before, so we'll start with the access advisory committee.
Nominate Marston.
So moved by Francisco, second by Hotchkiss, Marston by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, architectural board in review.
Nominate Graydon and Moore.
Moves that by acclamation, by Hotchkiss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Arts Advisory Committee. Any nominations?
Nominate Smithers, Vonk, Yiyavi.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Nancy Gifford.
Bleacher and Gifford, okay. Any other nominations?
Did we get Vonk in there?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't, so some of these are qualified elector of the city, so two or three of those, and we have, so if we do three of those, that means the county one won't be, but why don't we do, okay, we have to figure out, because if we do three city electors, then we don't have the county one because it depends on how many, you know, that we apply for the city. So I think we should vote for three, up to three positions, and we'll see if we have the county position in or out, if that makes sense. So why don't we have a roll call for that?
Councilmember Francisco.
Vonk and Smithers.
Hart.
Vonk, Yiyavi, and Bleacher.
Hotchkiss.
Vonk, sorry, Vonk, Smithers, and we can vote for a third in this one also or not?
You can vote for up to three out of all the five.
And Palencia.
I'm sorry, oh, did you, we didn't nominate Palencia, but you want to vote for Palencia, I suppose you could, but we already started the voting for other people. So what did you want? You wanted Vonk, Smithers?
Smithers.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Mario.
Madam Mayor, just with all due respect to Ms. Bleacher, I'd like to respect the term limits, so I know and love her, but I won't be voting for her. So Smithers, Vonk, Yiyavi.
Councilmember Rouse.
Smithers, Vonk, Yiyavi.
Councilmember White.
Ms. Smithers, Vonk, and Gifford.
Mayor Snyder.
Vonk, Bleacher, and Yiyavi. So I think we have Smithers, Vonk, and Yiyavi, who have more than four or more votes. Is that correct? Okay, all right. Yes, that was a tough one. There were amazing applicants, all of them, actually. Civil Service Commission.
Case Hogan and Lewis by acclamation.
Okay, motion by Mario, sir, second. Second by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Community Development and Human Services Commission, committee? And I believe you can do all three because Ms. Loza fits in two categories.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so Loza, Crisoso, and Orkarowski by acclamation, by Mario, and White, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Community Events and Festivals Committee, any nominations? We have a number of applicants here.
Dorsey.
Okay.
Carl. And Chartier.
Any other nominations?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, we should, we have, oh, those are four, so.
And Knack.
And so we had Chartier, Dorsey, Knack, and Carl, right? And there are four vacancies, so.
By acclamation.
Okay, by Mario, second. Is there a second? Second by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, Creeks Advisory Committee.
Hawkins, Muldiver, and Weber.
Okay, moved by Hart by acclamation. Any second?
Second.
Second by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Downtown Parking Committee.
Move Ed France.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Fire and Police Commission, two vacancies. Any nominations?
Christiansen, Torrell.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So White and Rouse, all in favor?
Aye.
Fire and Police Pension Commission?
Tracy.
Moved Tracy by acclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Hart, second by Mario. All in favor?
Aye.
Harbor Commission?
McIntosh.
McIntosh, okay, sorry. Moved by Hart, second by Mario. All in favor?
Aye.
Historic Landmarks Commission?
Drury.
Brumbein, okay. So is that a motion by acclamation, by Rouse, and second by Hart? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. County of Santa Barbara Library Advisory Committee.
Bailey.
Bailey by acclamation, from White and Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Library Board, then there's a number that don't have any positions in them, so take note for next time. Neighborhood Advisory Council. Any nominations?
Crisoso and Thomas.
I think Crisoso is the only one applicable, right?
But we've appointed him already to the community development.
Oh.
So do we want to just keep that vacant for now, or do we want to put him on two committees? It's up to the council. Going to hold off? Okay, so we'll move on, so he'll be busy next year. Parks and Recreation Commission?
Leanne French, please.
Okay, motion by Mario, second by Hotchkiss, all in favor?
Aye.
Planning Commission?
Caponella, Thompson.
Okay, moved by Hart, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hotchkiss, all in favor?
Aye.
Rental Housing Mediation Task Force?
Goble.
Okay, any others? Okay, moved by Mario, is there a second?
Second.
Second by White, I think, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and Single Family Design Board?
Winnie and James by acclamation.
Motion by Francisco, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mario, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Water Commission?
Bernie and Keller.
Okay, any other nominations?
Keller.
Yep, we got Bernie and Keller, so, all right, so that's a motion by Hart, is there a second?
Second.
Second by White, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, that's all of them. I'm sure that made a lot of sense to all of you out in the audience, but we actually got a lot of work done just then, so, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for applying. Okay, on to item number 18.
Possible short-term home-sharing rental ordinance.
Okay, who is taking, ah, Ms. Burke, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
We're here today to talk about the possible short-term home-sharing rental ordinance for the City of Santa Barbara. Since early 2015, the City Council has been actively engaged in a conversation about the proliferation of short-term vacation rentals in the City of Santa Barbara. As you know, we held a public hearing and a discussion in June of 2015, and returned to City Council in August for direction. Just for information, if there are any new people to the conversation, our zoning ordinance defines short-term rentals as less than 30 days. A portion of any building or dwelling unit, that could be a room or an entire unit, rented for less than 30 days, is considered a commercial use, similar to a hotel, motel, or bed and Hotels and commercial uses are not allowed in most residential zones of the city. In August, the City Council directed us to enforce our existing zoning regulations that prohibit vacation rentals in most residential zones, and increase staff in the Community Development Zoning Enforcement Section and for the City Attorney's Office to begin a proactive enforcement strategy on full-time, short-term vacation rentals. At the same time, in response to public comments that the council heard in June and in August, the City Council directed staff to explore amendments to the city's zoning ordinance that would allow home-sharing rentals. These are rentals that staff had defined, for the purpose of discussion, as someone's primary residence that they lived in year-round, but they rented a room or several rooms, and hosted visitors in their home for short-term, for a fee for overnight. And so in August, council directed us to explore that concept. The purpose of our meeting today is to give the City Council an update on the concept of permitting short-term home-sharing rentals in the City of Santa Barbara, and to provide direction to staff regarding the development of that ordinance. So in addition to research in what other cities do as far as home-sharing, the staff prepared a report and held a public hearing with the Planning Commission in October. The Planning Commission held a really good discussion about the opportunities and challenges of allowing home-sharing rentals in the City of Santa Barbara. And after a good public hearing and a robust discussion, the majority of the Planning Commission supported developing some sort of permit standards that the city would implement, that would include requiring the host to be on-site during the duration of the stay, which is how staff had defined home-sharing before the City Council in June and in August. The Commission had a lot of questions, but was also cautious about the enforcement difficulties and how much it would cost to actually implement a home-sharing ordinance. And I should mention that the Chair of the Planning Commission, Addison Thompson, is here today if you have any additional questions about the Planning Commission's discussion of the home-sharing. And we also, in our discussion with the Planning Commission, we asked them on a very conceptual level whether they thought home-sharing rentals were worth pursuing in the City of Santa Barbara, so the discussion was at a super-high level with them, as to whether they thought it was worth pursuing. Some of the enforcement challenges that we talked with them about had to do with the potential standards that we might develop to define, regulate, and permit home-sharing rentals. For example, whether the host is present or not, whether we regulate the number of occupants that could stay, and how many times a year they stay, which is what some other cities do, as well as the noise, parking traffic, and other nuisance-type of issues. What we've concluded in our research on the enforcement challenges as staff that we presented and talked to the Planning Commission about, is that it's very, very difficult to enforce home-sharing rentals. Whether a host is present during the stay, whether they're there for the weekend, or away on vacation, and they're renting their homes while they're gone, very, very difficult to observe if you're a zoning enforcement officer driving down the street. Also very difficult to document and observe whether a fee has taken place when visitors stay overnight in somebody's home. And further, the technology isn't there for us to effectively track and monitor these types of performance standards at this point in time. We also took a step back and again looked at our general plan, which is our governing document for how land uses are provided in the city. As you are well-known, the City of Santa Barbara is very constrained as far as our land being pinned in between the National Forest and the ocean, Montecito and Hope Ranch. And so for many, many, many years, the city has taken a very serious approach to governing its land uses. And recently, in 2011, the city's general plan was updated, again with the overarching affirmation of living within resources. And historically, housing has been one of the critical resources that the city has had to plan for. The general plan also takes a balanced approach to land uses in the city, protecting and preserving housing, allowing for some commercial development, but since the 1980s, we've had very strict restrictions on new commercial development in the city, as well as tourism and institutional uses. And it's really in our zoning ordinance where the city's most strict policies about neighborhood character and neighborhood preservation and the dynamics of neighborhoods occur. For example, in our single-family zones, if you look at the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, in our single-family, two-family, and even in our R3 zones, it clearly states that those zones are intended to establish, maintain, and protect the residential characteristics of those areas, and also to prohibit all activities that would be inharmonious to the preservation of a residential environment. And again, our single-family neighborhoods are in the hillsides, the Mesa, San Roque, Las Bacitas, Hidden Valley. Our R4 zone is where our high-density residential is allowed, as well as some hotel and motel uses. The R4 zones are located in, primarily in the west downtown area, West Beach, and a small area of East Beach as well. And even in the higher-density R4, the principal use of land, as stated in the zoning ordinance, is supposed to be for multiple-family housing. It is intended to allow hotel and similar establishments, while at the same time protecting the existing housing stock, out of a recognition that the housing in the waterfront and downtown is critical to our downtown workforce environment. And also in the R4, it's stated that we need to be careful to preserve the residential character of even the R4 neighborhoods where there is a mix of hotel and residential units. So there are a lot of people here to talk again today, we wanted to keep the staff presentation brief. We did provide you the written report and attached the Planning Commission's staff report that we presented. But in doing further analysis on this, we are back to the City Council, asking that you continue to enforce all our existing zoning regulations that prohibit short-term rentals, essentially citywide. The renting of a room for less than 30 days of a residential unit should be a commercial transient use and located in a hotel, motel, or similar establishment. And at this point, we are also recommending that we discontinue work on a home-sharing ordinance at this point in time. It's simply too difficult to distinguish between a home-sharing rental and a vacation rental, and many of the enforcement challenges are very similar and overlapping. However, we are asking for council direction today, and if we were asked to continue to work on the home-sharing ordinance, we would return to the Planning Commission with a series of work sessions to define and look at the permit standards and try to develop an ordinance that would be unique to Santa Barbara and work. That takes about 12 months, 12 to 16 months, to develop the ordinance, hold the public hearings, do the secret review, and have the ordinance returned back to City Council. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions first from council? I have one question. Currently, the R4 does allow, through, it sounds like a very complicated process, the, be able to have a vacation rental, and you're, are we looking to make that easier, or keep it as is, or what was the, what's the thought there? What, where's that talked about, the Planning Commission?
Madam Mayor, I believe I understand your question, but please let me know if I didn't. We do have a series of existing ordinances that apply to someone who wants to try to permit a vacation rental in a zone that allows it. They were not written with that intent, so we are learning as staff trying to apply these ordinances to request for that, and we are coordinating more among different departments as we learn that requirements overlap. So we have not yet proposed, and aren't proposing today, to change any of the ordinances that would apply, but we are trying to collaborate better to give a clearer message about how someone might do that. We also have not proposed making any changes to the ordinances to date to apply to home-sharing. Right now, there is not a mechanism for someone to permit a home-sharing operation in the city. Mr. Rouse?
Well, that leads to my question, Ms. Burke, was, so in terms of our records, in terms of what we've got so far with TO2 collection and whatnot, do we have any, we don't have a way to, we don't distinguish between a VRBO and a home share currently, if there's no, so we don't know, we have no idea what the numbers might possibly be between what's an existing home and somebody renting out a room in their home.
Okay. Member Schneider and Council, or Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Rouse, correct. We have no way to distinguish the people who have been issued a business license and have been paying TOT to the City Finance Department. We have no way to know whether they're the full-time vacation rental or a home-sharing operation. And part of the reason, we don't gather that information through the Finance Department. But I think it's also important to keep in mind, the definition of home-sharing, when we say that, people have not embraced staff's definition, which is a primary residence, I live there year-round, and occasionally I rent a room to visitors from out-of-state, sort of the traditional. What we've been hearing from people throughout all of the public hearings is, I'd like to rent my home when I go away for the weekend, or I travel in the summer and I would like to rent my home while I'm gone three months in the summer. I consider that home-sharing because it's my primary residence. So it's very hard when you ask to make a distinction between the two, and this is what we've been struggling with for all the months. Unless we can come to agreement on what a, what home-sharing is, the lines blur, and they essentially are all short-term rentals for less than 30 days.
But by that definition, so if somebody left for longer than 29 days and rented their home out, that would be a home-share, but that wouldn't fall under our TOT or business license requirements if there was a primary residence?
If they, if the short-term rental was for greater than 30 days, that's considered a residential rental or lease, anything for 30 days or greater.
And then for people who have income properties, but they're renting for long-term, whether it be one house or many houses, are they required to have business licenses for those operations?
No.
I'm getting both.
Well, residential, renting of homes for 30 days or greater is not, is a residential use.
I think Mr. Rouse is talking about like an apartment complex or something, or if you have a duplex or triplex.
Well, I was actually thinking of single-family residences, so if you had, for example, if you owned four homes, and your business was to have income properties, would you have a business license?
Mr. Samario, why don't you answer that question? You can come up to the podium here, it's probably easiest.
My name is Bob Smar, the Finance Director. So the question was whether somebody owns a single unit and rents it out for more than 30 days on a long-term lease or month-to-month, they are not required of business license. Those who own multi-unit properties, like, you know, apartment complexes, if they have three or more units, then they are required to have a business license.
Three or more, but they could be three or more single-family residences as well?
No, they would have to be multi-unit properties.
Well, they're multi, okay, that's what I was trying to get to, okay. Thank you.
Mr. White?
On the R4 topic, we are, right now, the city allows R4 properties to apply for, is it a conditional use permit to become a hotel? Is that the process? And then is that sort of the umbrella under which this sort of short-term rental thing would be contemplated? Is that the idea?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, currently, if someone is asking to convert one existing unit from a house to a vacation rental, it really, it falls primarily under the Growth Management Ordinance or the Development Plan Ordinance requirement, so not a conditional use permit because it is an allowed use, but it does need to be recognized as non-residential use.
Okay, so it's a development plan would be the discretionary process that it would undergo.
Correct. If there's more than one unit on a property that they wish to convert, then it falls into the Hotel Conversion Ordinance, which is a separate chapter of Title 28.
And that's also a development plan?
It's its own process, and is its own permit, is what it's called in the ordinance, Hotel Conversion Permit, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
And those two processes that you described are admittedly difficult, if I can put it that way, for an applicant to get through?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hotchkiss, they can be, it really depends on a site-by-site basis. We have had inquiries from a couple different people in the last several weeks. We've been working with one for several months that has proven to be particularly challenging, just given the site. We have also talked to a couple others that may go through the process fairly, fairly quickly, and they just aren't ticking as many boxes, depending on where it's located, the square footage of the unit, the parking situation. It doesn't always have to be complicated. But again, we don't have an ordinance specifically for vacation rentals, so we're applying the ones that are most applicable.
So before I go to public comment, because this process is complicated, and I want to make sure that everyone, at least as much as we can, understands the code and the licensing and all that, so I want to make, maybe I'll do in a series of questions to make sure I'm correct, so that way, when you make your comments, you understand what we're going through here, and I know we did this earlier this year. So currently, our zoning code does not allow, except for some, as was just explained in the R4, it currently does not allow any short-term rental accommodations in the code itself, correct?
Madam Mayor, correct, unless.
In the code?
Unless permitted through some type of discretionary process, yes.
Okay, so, and also, in the last several years, because some, I know a number of people saying, I do this already, I have a license and I submit TOT, that was a process that we allowed to have occurred in the last five, six years through the Finance Department. So that is, now, when we had the meeting before, we started a process of prioritizing enforcement, that those who have a license and are paying their TOT would be the last ones in the line to be enforced to close down, basically, their short-term rental operation. And Mr. Kalan, I believe that category would probably take another, if I'm remembering, sometime in 2017 to start that process for that category, is that correct? Yes. Okay, so the enforcement part, in part of the recommendation here, to exist, continue to enforce existing zoning regulations, the first round of enforcement has to do with operations that never received a license and never paid their TOT in the first round, and then we go from there. So I hope that makes some sense, and in order for the council to make any changes to the municipal code for Title 28, it requires a supermajority of five votes to do so, correct? it requires a supermajority of five votes to do so, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so if we wanted to have home-sharing, whether you're in the house, out of the house, whatever, you need five votes to change the current ordinance, okay? And, and for today, the direction that we would have to move forward would take just a simple majority vote of four votes to start a process, and whomever's up here at the time, whenever you get to it, you know, have at that point in time, whether or not they want to adopt an ordinance with the five-vote supermajority, correct? Okay, all right. So I hope that is clear as bud for everyone. I'm gonna start the public comment unless there are any other questions. Okay, and I'm gonna, if you have not submitted a speaker slip, please do so within the next five minutes, because after that, I'll cut off the time for Mr. Casey to submit speaker slips. So if you want to submit a speaker slip, please do so in the next five minutes, and you have two minutes here at the podium. And we'll start with Todd Jacobs, to be followed by Tiffany Haller. And if your name is on deck, if you could be close to the speaker, to the podium, so we can keep things moving efficiently, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Home-sharing is an even less desirable form of short-term vacation rentals, which thankfully you have already banned within most zones of the city. It is worse because it compounds the problems associated with other short-term vacation rentals, meaning there will be even more people in the houses and vehicles trying to find parking in the neighborhoods due to the owners being on-site as well. Neighborhoods were designed and designated for residential use, not commercial use. I did not buy my home, which is in the E1 single-family home residential zone, to live next door to an illegal four-plex. My neighbor's home is currently configured with the owners living in the garage apartment and renters in the main part of the house, basement and converted tool shed. It is currently advertised on VRBO as sleeps eight. I'm not sure if that is eight plus the owners or not. There are seven parking spots on my entire street, guess where the extra vehicles go? The majority of the people testifying in favor of these VRBO home-sharing rules at these meetings are the ones who stand to profit the most from this conversion of residential properties to commercial use. I've been to every public meeting on short-term rentals and home-sharing, and what you hear are real estate agents and the proprietors of these neighborhood rentals stating, the neighbors don't mind at all. Most of the neighbors are busy at their jobs so that they can pay for their houses the old-fashioned way and can't make it to these meetings. I would like to represent all of the actual neighbors who are not here and tell you that having short-term renters next door to my home, whether the owners are there or not, is an inconvenience to my family and lowers the value of our property. The city cannot effectively manage and enforce zoning violations as it is. How do you really expect the zoning and code enforcement staff to keep up with what will undoubtedly become a surge in unpermitted home conversions to support more vacation rental units, adding a sink here or a toilet there? Finally, the city is only using a percentage of the transient occupancy tax that it collects to enforce the short-term rental problems that many of us are already having to deal with. Why not spend most or all of the TOT money on the problem?
Wind up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Haller will be followed by John, and I meant to say earlier, you know, we're, we've received a lot of correspondence on this issue, and if you've heard something at public comment that you wanted, that you also agree with, you can say, I agree with the previous speaker on the issue. You don't have to say the whole thing, you know, vibrate him again, so, just, but we do want to hear what you have to say. Okay, thank you, Ms. Haller, and then to be followed by John.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and city council members. My name is Tiffany Haller, and I am a real estate broker, property manager, broker associate at Village Properties, and member of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors. I'm here to talk about what you just talked about, is the R4 zone, and that it is designated as a legal-to-rent-for-less-than-30-day zone. It falls into the 21st cat, 21st century category of vacation rentals and home shares. However, nowhere in the municipal code is there a definition for a vacation rental or a home share. Instead, the city has arbitrarily classified it as a hotel commercial use and instructed those owners to follow the process of converting their entire property to a hotel. So if you own a duplex, you have to convert your duplex to a hotel in order to do what the code says you're legally allowed to do. That process is one to two years, I've been quoted by city staff. It's $20,000 to $30,000. It might require ripping walls apart in your property to separate water lines, the list goes on and on. Is it a hotel? No. Does it look like a hotel? No. Does it operate like a hotel? No. Is there a lobby, a front desk person, housekeeping? No. So what I'd like to ask of you is if you could initiate talks and do what Sonoma County, San Luis Obispo County, Aspen, Colorado has done in adding to their ordinance that a vacation rental is something different than a hotel, same as home-sharing, it's not in the same category. I also would like you to please be aware that the city is sending letters like this one to people in the R4 zone that have business licenses and saying that all of these are illegal rentals, which is incorrect to say. There's settlement agreements being issued by the district attorney there that are being forced to sign, and all of this needs to stop. So please, can you please look at the ordinances and add home-sharing and vacation rentals?
Thank you. John will be followed by Lena.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Okay, I just wanna, I'm asking you to reject the planning department staff recommendation to ban the home sharing. I'm a proud, hard-working resident of the city, and I haven't, me and my wife, own a small home, a house, yeah. We're not, you know yourself, the cost of living here in Santa Barbara is quite expensive, I know. Airbnb has been a godsend to me and my wife and to the rest of the community here, I'm sure, I speak for as well. Sharing our homes supplements payments towards our mortgage, our taxes and whatever. I've listened to other arguments as well. We don't have a parking problem, issues of parking or anything like that. My guests always park on my drive. I park a street away or whatever, don't have any problems there. I'd also like to say that, you know, had this Airbnb been in at the start of this humongous recession, maybe the people would still have their homes to live in today, you know, I wouldn't be able to go into foreclosure and things like that. So I think it's a great idea, but it has to be regulated, obviously, you know. I speak for myself, my wife, and people like me, home-sharing, a room in your home, you know, and keeping it quiet, you know, and being respectful, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
It works in other cities, San Diego, they take it out of there.
Lena will be followed by Denise.
First, I want to say, I understand that people don't want to have a lot of loud parties and a lot of parking problems and a lot of cars on the street, and I know, because next door to me is a woman who rents out to five college students. There is police visits often, there is pot wafting through the air, they set fire to the house, and there's tons of cars parked in the street from parties and things like that. I have a vacation rental, I have a license, I have a duplex, I live upstairs, I'm there every single day because I work at home. And the guests I have are a lot of professionals, UCSB professors, people that have businesses in town, it's from, a lot of them stay one month, three months, I have that, but I also have a lot of grandparents, actually, that come here to visit with their, with their family, with their kids and grandkids. A lot of them happen to live close to where I live, they don't even have a car, they walk there. So I just don't understand how you can allow these loud parties and parking problems and, and police raids on the place, when I've never had a problem, never. So why can't we just do some kind of regulation that you, you have warnings, you have fines, you, you do something to turn, to stop people from being able to have a vacation rental or home sharing if there is a problem? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. The other thing that doesn't make sense a lot is that if I have a great client, which I have, I haven't had any problems, they can stay three days or three months, and nobody would really know because nobody complains, they don't barely know they're there. But if I have a bad person, they're not allowed to stay five days, but they can stay 31 days? What is that? I don't understand that rule. It doesn't make sense at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna please ask that you refrain, no, you're fine Denise, the audience to refrain from cheering or jeering, just so we can make sure we hear what everyone has to say and so we acknowledge everyone's opinion in the room. So thank you, but we got that, many of you liked that comment, so. Denise, I think, is next, or was that just Denise? Was that Denise? No. Yep, that was Denise. Okay, Willie Quinn will be followed by Joel Crosby. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and all the council members. As you can see by my badge, I'm here to say what I have to say about the home sharing. I think it's a great thing. It brings a lot of money to Santa Barbara and a lot of tourists. Tourists that stay in vacation rentals have more money to spend in Santa Barbara than the people who stay in hotels because it's cheaper. And I can't understand how any city council or county could think about banning something that brings so much money to Santa Barbara, and they don't do a whole lot about something that, that's turning away tourists from Santa Barbara. That is the homeless problem. So, well, that's all I have to say about it. We've never had any trouble in our home, home sharing. We've had it for about a year now, no trouble whatsoever. And I think that there's been about 60 in the last 10 years, 60 problems, that's 60 year that, that would count it, one every two months, whereas there's about, I'd say about that many problems with the homeless in two weeks. I know, because we have a business on Santa Bar, in Santa Barbara Street. So, thanks very much for letting me talk. Thank you.
Joel Crosby will be followed by Nana Kiros.
Good afternoon, I'm Joel Crosby, I'm an attorney here in Santa Barbara, and there's several questions that I wish to pose, I don't expect an answer momentarily, but what justification actually exists for an ordinance to prohibit short-term rentals or home sharing? What surveys or studies have been conducted to show a need for any such ordinance? Do ordinances exist already against nuisance, against excessive noise? What studies have been conducted by Santa Barbara as to the impact of short-term rental on the long-term rental market, on rental rates? What difference between a rental of 29 days and 31 days? Is this not arbitrary? Is it not true that long-term tenants can produce long-term nuisance and negative impact upon the community? Is it not true that private housing is not part of the commercial rental inventory and does not adversely affect the availability of long-term apartment rentals? Do the citizens of Santa Barbara have the opportunity to vote on this? Apparently not. Financial, can the city of Santa Barbara really afford to throw away $1,200,000 or more in tax revenue and incur a new enforcement expense that could cost the citizens of Santa Barbara close to $100,000 a year? Has the city done a study or survey as to the potential loss of income to businesses, restaurants, bars, stores, tourist attractions, if the short-term rental clientele disappears by the proposed ordinance? Has a study or consideration been given to the financial impact on those renting their homes or rooms in their home if they are denied the right to do so? Are they not citizens of Santa Barbara entitled to appropriate consideration? Is this not a callous disregard of these people dependent upon the income to maintain and improve their property and just simply to subsist in this expensive city? The question of legality is an important one. The city has admitted-
Thank you, you need to wind up, please.
Excuse me?
You're out of time, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Nana, I, please, asked not to cheer or jeer, thank you. Nana Kiros will be followed by Tom Widrow.
My name is Nana Kiros. I've been a resident of Santa Barbara since 1973, when I came here to attend UCSB. I fell so in love with this town that I found a way to stay. I purchased my house the old-fashioned way in 1984, it's up on the Mesa, near Skyline Circle. Let's fast-forward to 2015. I've recently retired from a 38-year career in graphic art, and I am now living my dream of being a professional clown. I'm a therapy clown, and I also perform at parties, and I'm carrying this whimsical attitude of life, this wonderful joy of life, the love I have for this town, into everything in my house. I've decorated my house with clown accordion and pug dog memorabilia, it adorns my walls all over the place. When people come into my home, it's like a very low-grade Madonna Inn, and they have the best time. They get to see what it's like to be a happy Santa Barbara, and they get to see how wonderful the neighborhoods are. And one thing that must be taken into consideration is that this is a very small part of a big thing called the sharing economy, also referred to as collaborative consumption, which is a new way of doing business, where your reputation and your character is your currency as opposed to your bank account or your credit report. It's, this is a new way of doing business that young people are embracing. Not only did they create this, but they prefer it, and in only a matter of time, they will demand it. Hospitality is only one area that the sharing economy has affected and moving, it's a, it's a wave that's taking over. It's affected transportation, it's affected sharing tools, it's affected sharing land so that people can collaborate together and grow their own food. This is a wave that can't be ignored. This is the way young people want to do business. Because of Airbnb, I've attracted young people who ordinarily wouldn't be able to come here and spend three figures on a room at a hotel, but when they come here, they take back to them this wonderful experience, and they say, you gotta go stay with this clown in Santa Barbara because she is so cool, and Santa Barbara is a wonderful place to visit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Widrow will be followed by Bradley Roberts.
Madam Mayor, thank you, members of the city council. My wife and I and our four kids hopped in the minivan over Thanksgiving vacation, and we went up to the East Bay, and we actually stayed in a vacation rental in the East Bay because my folks' house can no longer accommodate myself, our three seven-year-olds, and our five-year-old, and my wife. So we had a great experience, it was a residential neighborhood, and it was nice, and so I guess I, regarding your previous decision banning these, I'm not sure I understand those, and I tend to agree with other speakers who talked about rental properties up by City College and in Iowa Vista where I'm from originally, as a UCSB Gaucho, I see those as bigger problems. That being said, the, I tend to agree with what staff says, that this is, the home-sharing is not enforceable. The idea that you're going to hire more city staff, more regulations, more taxes, you know, trying to keep watch over people in that way, sounds a little bit like a little 1984 would be the effort of enforcement that you'd have to do to find out whether people were in compliance or not. So once again, while I would say I think vacation rentals are fantastic and home-sharing is fantastic, and we should be a little bit more liberal about that, and I don't think it's changing the character of our neighborhoods, at the same time, with regard to what staff said, I would opt out of that if I were you, just because I think you're gonna have a very difficult time funding it and enforcing it. Thank you.
Bradley Roberts will be followed by Dorothy Walstein.
Good afternoon, council and madam mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bradley Roberts. I am the co-chair of the Democratic Home Shareers Club in San Francisco, and I worked very closely with Lieutenant Governor Gavin Newsom, Assembly Member David Chu, Mayor Ed Lee, and Supervisor Scott Weiner in order to squash Proposition F in San Francisco. I am an Airbnb host, an Uber driver, I sit on the board of two nonprofit organizations, including the oldest LGBT nonprofit organization in the United States. All of these things are possible for me because of Airbnb. These things are, I'm able to donate my time, donate money, and help people by renting out rooms in my place. And I'm, I came to Santa Barbara actually just to speak with Mayor Schneider about sharing on a, on a local level, and I didn't really even come here to talk about Airbnb, I just happened to be here today. I spoke with Councilmember Maria yesterday, in which she told me that there was going to be this vote today, whether to ban it or to continue, and she frustratingly told me that every member on this council has already decided to ban short-term housing, and I'm here to, to hope that you don't. Where I'm staying, my host wouldn't, wouldn't rent to a long-term renter, and she's only renting because she needs to make improvements on her home. She lives, she has a job here that does not pay enough for her to keep her home. She's an 18-year resident of Santa Barbara, and I really wish that she could keep her home. So that's all I have, thank you.
Dorothy Walstein will be followed by Deborah Pentland.
Sometimes I listen to these discussions and I, and I'm thinking, like, what's wrong with- Sometimes I listen to these discussions, and I'm thinking, like, what's wrong with this picture? It seems to me that one of the problems is, is that the rules themselves are arbitrarily applied, like, you know, this idea of a hotel, you know, like, that my house should be a hotel. But it's not a hotel. And, you know, this 30-day thing, you know, there's, you know, to me, it's like a home occupation business that is no different from a massage therapist or some, you know, like, surely this is a benign use of my home. And the problem may be the regulations as they exist, rather than, you know, trying to enforce something, you know, trying to fit a square peg into a round hole or something like that. So, I know that the chairman of the Planning Commission last time said something like, you know, "Wouldn't it be simpler just to change the home occupation rules to allow home sharing?" And the other thing is that I would like to eventually hear a serious conversation about the R4 people, because I am an R4 person. And it just seems like that, you know, I get this vague, "Oh, well, you're okay, you're in R4." But am I okay? Because if it's gonna take two years and $20,000 to convert my house to a hotel, you know, come on. Like, just some common sense thinking about, you know, is it a hotel or is it a house? Yeah. Thanks.
Deborah Pentland will be followed by Reina Stapleman. Deborah, yeah, it's you.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilwoman. My name's Debbie Pentland, and I've been here for 32 years. I'm a homeowner, and I've been a landlord of 30 days or more. And I support short-term rentals. I've both used them in San Francisco, Colorado, Denver. The neighborhoods didn't change. In my own neighborhood, I had a short-term rental. I didn't even know it was a short-term rental. It was run so well. The house three for me, three houses from me was rented to Santa Barbara City College, and it was craziness. But what I'm really afraid of is Santa Barbara, what I'm proud of Santa Barbara, is we have been progressive. And to go and to slam the door like Montecito did is totally, I would hope that you would look further than that. I hear the bias in the report. I don't know what your personal bias is, but this is a sharing economy. And I find that we need to go forth for the future, not go to things that stand from 1950. When you looked at gang injunctions versus programs like we heard today, one-story buildings to three-story, you put your heart and soul in it, and you made good decisions. You made something reasonable, common sense, and progressive for our community. Please don't do what Montecito did. I mean, look at counties who have found reasonable. And I do not believe there is not a system that cannot be set up today to monitor. You can do, you can comment on anything on the internet. You can register all the neighbors to an Airbnb. They can rate it right after. I think the organizations that run Airbnb would do it for you. So, I think you need to think progressively and be reasonable, and not take us back to 1950. Thank you.
Reina Stapleman will be followed by Donna Byatt.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and councilmembers. I'm Reina Stapleman, the president of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors. While we are pleased that you are taking some time to review a possible short-term home-sharing rental ordinance, we wish that you took more time also to review a short-term vacation rental ordinance. It's important that you look at this possible ordinance from all viewpoints, from the private property owner rights to the impact on the neighborhood. Property owners should have flexibility with their property use within reason, and neighbor concerns need to be addressed. Listening to neighbor concerns is what you as a council do, but these property owners have core rights to their bundle of sticks. This is a bundle of rights pertaining to ownership which includes the rights to possess and use the property, the right to exclude others from the property, and the right to gain income from the property by foregoing personal use and allowing others to use it. Among the core rights that a property owner typically has, and that an owner does not expect to be deprived of by regulation, is the right to lease or rent the property on a temporary basis to another party. That party temporarily acquires, in exchange for payment of rent, one of the sticks in the bundle of property rights. The right to use and occupy the property for the agreed-upon rental period to the exclusion of all others. The Supreme Court of Connecticut upheld this right by stating that stripping essentially one-third of the bundle of economically productive rights constituting ownership is a very significant restriction on their right of ownership. In order to avoid stripping any property owner of their bundle of sticks, we encourage you to take a fair and balanced approach that addresses the concerns of neighbors while preserving the rights of the homeowners similar to the Galida Vacation Rental Ordinance. Thank you for your consideration on this matter.
Donna Byatt, or Byatt, if you could let me know. And then Mike Conaway.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Donna Byatt. I've been a property manager for 32 years, but I do not manage any short-term rentals, and I do not do it in my own home. But I think that it's still a good idea to do it. I've stayed in them myself, and it's been wonderful memories every place I've gone, here and also out of the country. Some people complain that short-term rentals, and this would be taking away from long-term housing. I think that most of the people who do homestays would not be renting out their rooms on a long-term basis, so it's not really taking away housing, because they want to be able to do it when they want to, and then their house is available for friends and family comes. With a well-crafted ordinance, you will still be able to collect TOT, the bed tax, and by banning it, you're losing all that money, plus you're putting aside $100,000 to pay for someone to monitor this. So, you're losing money and spending money, which I don't think makes financial sense. Since you already want to pay someone to monitor it, why don't you have this person go out and be able to check these short-term rentals? Make sure there's smoke alarms, CO detectors, there's enough off-street parking. If you craft a good ordinance, you'll be able to say, "This is what is necessary to do a short-term rental or home share." And I'm thinking, when CIR has become voluntary, you can use that staff to do these jobs. So, I think a well-crafted ordinance can be a win-win situation for the city and its inhabitants. Thank you.
Mike Conaway, and is Anna Huerta here? Is Anna here? And you're giving your two minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So, you have up to four minutes, and you'll be followed by Mickey Flax.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and councilmembers. My wife and I have been permanently residing in our only home since 1988, which is on Cliff Drive, and renting approximately 70 nights a year for a number of years, and always paying transient occupancy taxes from the beginning. This has enabled us to stay in our home. We do not stay in our home, however, during our short-term rentals, but we have outstanding relationships with our neighbors due to our strict policies regarding who we rent to and how we strictly monitor and enforce good behavior. Both our daughters are local young professionals in town and have suffered the exorbitant costs to rent in a tight rental market. We totally support ensuring all possible rental units be made available on the market for year-round rentals to young professionals. An ordinance that stipulates that home shares can be done by owners who live in their homes would curb speculators with multiple properties that only rent short-term. We feel that trying to stop home sharing does not solve the lack of available and affordable rental issues. For example, thousands of City College and UCSB students use up a high percentage of available rentals. These students are the ones that cause noise and over-parking in our cities and residential areas, not home-sharing renters that pay taxes whose guests have a small and quiet impact in the neighborhood. New housing and regulations for renting to students are needed to solve the problem. I recommend that a home-sharing ordinance be pursued and implemented on a trial basis like what was done with the VIEW ordinance 10 years ago. After an 18-month trial period, the ordinance was passed and has become a permanent and effective tool for the city. A trial home-sharing ordinance would allow for refining the ordinance during the trial based on information gathered from other cities, as well as how the licensing and enforcement works during the trial period. It would allow the city to collect and use the TOT taxes to support the staffing for effective ordinance licensing and enforcement. I have enclosed an article that I sent to you all from the New York Times on the home-sharing issue. It describes how San Francisco avoided a potential lawsuit from Airbnb if the city had banned it. I think that shows how contentious the issue could become in Santa Barbara without a clear and well-thought-out plan and/or a home-sharing ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Flax will be followed by Steve Pearson.
Good afternoon, I'm Mickey Flax. I've lived here for 46 years, and when I first came, property rights were enforced by restrictive covenants, not allowing people of color or Jews to live in wonderful Santa Barbara. I don't think we want to go back to those days. And yet, we have a vacancy rate that approaches zero, as I've reminded you countless times. Anything that negatively affects the supply of housing should be severely restricted or not permitted at all. Airbnb, one of the Bs should stand for billions. It is hardly a company that is part of the sharing economy. It is a company that makes, takes most of the profit that is accrued to these home-sharing or vacation rentals, takes it away from the homeowner. Airbnb and similar companies are not transparent. They could help in these kinds of enforcement issues if they were, but they have no desire to do so, and they help contribute to the problem. Zoning, I believe, should be taken seriously, to change the zoning for vacation rentals, to say, "Well, this is an area that's zoned for residential single-family, except you, Mr. Smith, can have an additional source of income by running what one of the speakers described as a home business. You, Mr. Green, who want to start a legal office in your home, are not permitted to do so." That, I don't think, will fly in the law, and certainly doesn't conform to zoning regulations that the people who bought their houses expected. They live in R1, they don't expect the business to open next to them. Because of the difficulty or impossibility of distinguishing between short-term and vacation rentals, short-term rentals may be the victims of the desire to regulate essentially vacation rentals, certainly from a housing point of view.
Thank you.
But there it is, so we've got to do it, ban the law. Thank you.
Steve Pearson will be followed by Diane Pearson.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Basically, I support small, short-term rentals as a home occupation. I've already submitted written information to the council, so I won't repeat those. We also do support alternative and affordable lodging accommodations for tourists. I think that's very, very important. I guess I just want to make two additional comments beyond why I've already indicated in writing. First of all, if there are problems, I don't necessarily think it's an imponderable enforcement problem for staff, the neighbors are going to complain. I always never have, because we're good owners. But if there's a problem, neighbors will comment. The second thing that occurred to me is, we are currently looking at housing shortages and problems in the densest neighborhoods, and those are precisely the only neighborhoods where short-term stays are going to be permitted. If we continue that process, the problem is going to get compounded to the extent we allow them. I think we can actually facilitate long-term housing or longer-term housing for the tourism-related employees and stuff by allowing short-term stays, small short-term stays, to extend out into other areas of the city, and therefore, they won't be required only to be located in commercial and D4, R4-type zoning. And I guess that's all I have to say at this point. Thank you.
Diane Pearson will be followed by Anna Marie Gott.
My name is Diane Pearson. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I have been an innkeeper for 25, 20 years, and a home-share host for five years. I've always paid my taxes. We live on one acre plus and have hosted two people only. We have a small property, small lodging, big property. We have no problem with our neighbors. And I agree with supporting the reasonable regulation of home shares, small home shares, specifically implementing reasonable regulations to allow low-occupancy owner-occupied home sharing, which could include homestays where the primary resident is typically in residence, limiting or eliminating non-registered guests, thus, as well as events. So, no events, limit the maximum number of registered guests, such as two to four people, require off-street parking and restricted quiet hours, and require a minimum lot size to eliminate the problems with other neighbors. Clarify that Airbnb will collect and remit taxes to the city, so there's no reason for somebody to get outside of the law. And home shares, the definition, it should allow, should be similar to allowing a home occupation. The diversity in lodging in Santa Barbara would be wonderful, because there's not everybody that can afford the four seasons. A lot of people also want to come with their families and have a more authentic travel experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Marie Gott. And then you have a number of people who want to waive their time. Nicholas Cordoso, are you here? There you are. Tiffany Morton? There you are. And Joe, Joe, Joe Rutten? Yep. Okay. So, you have up to eight minutes. And then you'll be followed by Leigh Muldamer. Go ahead.
My name is Anna Gott. I'm a member of the Bungalow Haven Neighborhood Association. Today, I urge every councilmember to vote no on home sharing. It is impossible to manage, regulate, or regulate. It is not part of our general plan, and it brings commercial activities into residential areas, and it opens the door to short-term rentals, which are illegal and unmanageable with the current ordinances in place today. Having knocked on 250 doors in August to invite my neighbors to a neighborhood social, I know firsthand the significant numbers of home shares and short-term rentals that have been taken out of the rental market in favor of, excuse me, rental market in favor of short-term rentals and home shares. So far, the actions that this council has taken have actually failed to do little in terms of stopping the proliferation of short-term rentals or home shares. If you look on Airbnb today, you will find hundreds and thousands, if you actually look long enough, of apartments and bedrooms for rent in Santa Barbara. Unless you really focus on the true motives and the revenue stream of Airbnb, you will not stop any of this, which just simply will not change. Airbnb is driven by two things, their revenue and their valuation for their IPO. They earn money by the transactions. We need to make that illegal. We need to have the city attorney or anyone else that you need to hire to actually write an ordinance that will prohibit the advertisement and the transactions of any monetary value for home rentals or short-term rentals. As long as short-term rentals or home shares are profitable, they're going to continue to list it. So will all of the other companies. And I am urging you today to ask the city attorney to create such an ordinance to ensure that none of these are legal and that we can go after not just the homeowner or the person trying to rent, but Airbnb, invited home, and anyone else that is actually advertising or accepting a transaction. You will be able to figure it out, and we should be able to shut these down. Finally, I want you to remember, if you have actually read it, some of the information about Airbnb that they have kindly provided to you yesterday, and it was in the Independent. You know, they talk a lot about hosts and their needs for extra income. They then provide to cities data that only they have access to to share their story. You know, if we had actual access to this, to the data, and it was unadulterated, I'm confident that we would find that a minority of their hosts generate the majority of their revenue. They would include multi-unit property owners, investments, investors- They would include multi-unit property owners, investments, investors, property managers, and illegal dwellings. So let me leave you with some data of my own. You all have a packet, and...
Hold on, I'm going to stop the clock. We've listened to everyone, and we want to listen to everyone. So we, so if you want to speak on top of a public comment speaker, you can do it outside the chambers. Thank you. Go right ahead. She, she had three people give her her time, so she had up to eight minutes, and I said that at the beginning. So she is still entitled to four minutes and six seconds. Thank you. Go right ahead.
So this actually paints a very different picture of the hosts and their properties on Airbnb. You know, the hosts that you actually have here, you know, you've got a seven-unit property that actually is illegal, and they're advertising an entire apartment building, half of a duplex and a cottage. They've been reported. You have a trailer that's out in front of someone's home. They have had $50,000 of rental, if you average 2.6 nights, and you base that on the number of reviews that they've actually received. So if you go through here and actually look, you will find that, you know, most people are renting out, yes, maybe a place in their home, but it might be illegal, they may be renting out in an entire apartment building. We have a gentleman that actually has a license to rent out an apartment building downtown. It's 200 Cannon Perdito. I would urge you to really consider, you know, banning, as I said, the home shares, and creating something that makes it legally possible for you to go after the platforms, the people that are dealing with the transactions, anyone that is accepting payment for advertising. And that's really all I have to say. I think that you are going to have an eyeful, in terms of the, the things that I've actually provided, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you. Lee Muldaver will be followed by Bob Hart.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider, members of the council. I'm Lee Muldaver, a long-term resident, former president of the Allied Neighbors Association. I would like to remind you that this morning, as you've been often informed by Rob Dayton, 28,000 people got into cars and vans and buses from 20 to 50 miles away. Some of them work in this building for you, some of them work for you on Garden Street, and they made that commute, which they make five days a week, 50 weeks a year, adding to traffic and smog, because they cannot find rooms, apartments, condos, or houses that they can afford to rent or share. I'm not even talking about buying in this market. I have no problem with the people here and why they're supporting vacation rentals. I support the staff report and the staff recommendation. I would like to go a little bit further, and I think the city could publicize that there's an anonymous tip line, and if people have concerns about this, you can actually use social media, and actually have a community plebiscite without an election. I think if Lanny Ebenstein was here, he would suggest that the standards for enforcement and for fees be put at the actual staff time, attorney's time, and court time, plus 10% to defer or to deter people who are operating these things in areas that do not comport with the zone or the general plan. When I was on the Downtown Waterfront Task Force, the end result for 117 people from every profession was to be visitors-friendly but community-oriented.
Thank you. Bob Hart will be followed by Theo Crackey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm Bob Hart, I'm the executive officer of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors. I actually hadn't been planning to make a presentation today until we began, and there was an assumption made right at the very beginning, and that was that a vacation rental is a commercial use of a property. And, and I don't believe that assumption is correct, that, the way I see it, it's a residential use, it's just for a shorter period of time. If someone's there for 29 days, does that make it commercial? No, if they're selling something out of the house, or something like that, it'd be commercial, but it's still a residential use for a shorter period of time. So I think that one of the things we're having is trying to put the square peg into the round hole. They're trying to say, "How do we deal with this new commercial use, where in fact, it is, it's not a commercial use? It's just a shorter-term residential." The R4 zone allows for short-term rentals. R4 is a residential zone. You can't do commercial in an R4 zone, it's a residential zone. So I think there's a real confusion about what is residential, what's commercial, and I think we maybe need to look at a legal opinion on, on where it is. Now, from the Association of Realtors position, you heard from Raina, we're looking for a balanced approach. We think we need to balance the homeowner's rights to use their property the way they want to use it, along with the neighborhood's concerns about noise and other things, and to craft some good language that would make sense. I'm very concerned for your staff in that, they said they don't have an ordinance that covers vacation rentals, so they're trying to deal with them the best they can utilizing existing ordinances. That's a very tough spot to put your staff in. So if there's something we can do to have clarity on the issue, and work for a good balanced approach that would meet the needs of the concerned neighbors and the homeowners who are trying to, to get by, we would be glad to work with you, to help you craft some language that would do that. I volunteer my services, we have others on our staff that would be very willing to help also, but I think we can come up with something that would make sense, but the first step is to not call it a commercial use. Thank you.
Theo Crackey will be followed by, I think it's Kathy, Kathy Hay. Henry, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I'm Theo Crackey. Nice to see you all again. I was watching the, the hearings earlier, and I decided I'm just going to stand at this podium until you vote to approve a home sharing ordinance. I'm handcuffing myself, just stop, stop, stop. All right, no, I really do want to encourage you to please vote to approve a home sharing ordinance. I wrote you a long letter, I don't need to go into the details of it, but the three really key points are, short-term rentals and home sharing are not the leading cause of affordable housing or the shortage of long-term rentals. The nuisances that are happening in neighborhoods are a very overstated problem, and also, I think that the huge amounts of TOT revenues from these short-term rentals really cannot be ignored. It's 1.2 million, it can go to 3.6 million, there's 36 cops that could be hired with that money, there is affordable housing support that could be done with that money. So, you know, I've, you've heard me ad nauseam on my feelings about this. I really want you to, I know, and a lot of you have existing ideas about this, but please take this opportunity to try to allow staff to come forward and allow some kind of home sharing ordinance. I love the guy's idea that said, "You could try it, you know, just 18 months, see if it works, then prohibit it." But I think that we're leaving a lot of really good opportunities on the table. I think you guys can show your leadership and progressiveness by really please voting to try it. And, the very first speaker, who's complained several times about a real problem neighbor in his area, there's a great system in place, and the city is actively enforcing it very clearly. If he's in the city limits, he can stop that rental next to him by reporting the nuisance to the city. Tax-paying person that's been paying their TOTS had that recent complaint, and the city's taken immediate action on that. So if he's still here, he should do that. So, anyway, please consider it, do home sharing. Thank you very much.
Kathy Henry will be followed by Nancy Earl.
Hi, I wasn't going to speak today, but then, some people kind of motivated me to. I'm wondering, I was a little bit concerned about what one of the speakers said, is it true that you guys have already decided on this issue?
Here to give direction to staff on what comes next.
Well, I'm here to, and the other thing I want to say is, anyone that opposes this home sharing, they shouldn't stay in any vacation rentals when they travel. I mean, it just doesn't kind of go with the logic. I'm here to basically suggest some reasonable and effective, you know, policies. I'm only talking about R4, which is an area where it's already allowed. You know, I consider myself an ambassador of Santa Barbara. I want people to come here and see how beautiful the city is, see how reasonable the people are, and I want to share that with people. It's not about corporate America, it's about property rights and maintaining the culture of Santa Barbara. I'm seeing that there's inconsistencies in the procedure, there was that news story about the lady who's in an R4 zone paying, you know, TOT, and I thought we were going to, I thought it was going to be, you were going to prioritize who you were going after, but rather than that, that seemed like it was just a blanket approach. You know, if you, I think with home sharing, that properties will be kept up more, more so than maybe some of these other properties where they have long-term rentals. There's, there's a certain property owner here in Santa Barbara that does not maintain its properties very well, and, you know, once you go 30 days or more, these people have tenancy rights, so if you get a bad tenant in there, you can't kick them out, but if they're in there for 30 days or less, you know, if they're a bad tenant, you could get them out right away. You know, there's ways, you know, you can revoke the license, you know, if you give the licenses for vacation rentals, you know, maybe after a certain number of complaints, reasonable complaints, it can be revoked, and then that, that property owner won't be allowed to have that use anymore. And there's other consequences. If you make a property owner convert the use of their property from residential to hotel, it might affect the property value, you might not be able to get a loan on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nancy Earl? Is Nancy still here? She had to leave, I think, a little early. Okay, all right, so we have Sandy Campbell, then Courtney Caswell-Dayton, Brian Kenny, Bill Dinklage, and the final speaker will be Brad Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I've moved to Santa Barbara in 2008 and bought a historic 100-year-old triplex in the West Beach area, which is an R4 zone, and I've become very confused as to how I should look in order to be what I feel I'm wanting to do with my property. The units are rather, I've lived in the main unit, and there's two small back units that when I first took the property over, I converted one to a vacation rental. I've been above board, got a license from the city, paid my TOTS. After one, a couple of years later, I had a tenant who left the other property, I converted that over as well. So I've evolved from one vacation rental to two, and to a point where even our frontman is now sharing it. So I can, I can look whichever way I need to look to fit the criteria, but I don't know what you're looking for exactly, and that's been confusing. I think the clientele that I, that are served by having vacation rentals is different than hotels. You know, we have visiting professionals who maybe, like, I have returning people who are executives with Sonos, people, professors from the university who want a place for one to two weeks, they don't really want to be in a hotel. I've served families who maybe have two or three children, that's pretty hard to deal with in a hotel situation. Vacation rentals really serve the purpose for a lot of people like this. I do get longer-term rentals as well, where someone, snowbirds come down for a month or two, and so there's a variety of clientele that gets served by these that are not going to be served by hotels at all. And I wanted to say that some of the issues that you get concerned about, like parking in West Beach, there's overlapping issues that are going on. You have, it's an R4 zone, but the parking is also regulated on weekends, so I have the need to get your visiting parking permits, and that was also something that became...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Courtney Caswell-Dayton, come on up, and then Brian Kenny.
As I mentioned, the first time I came up here...
Don't you see, lower mic there, Courtney?
Sorry. I didn't see both of them.
There you go.
As I mentioned, the first time I came up here, I've been here in Santa Barbara on and off since 1998. I used to rent pending me finding a very famous, actually, two very famous pictures of my great-grandfather in an establishment here. I am now fighting no longer to be homeless. I feel that Santa Barbara needs to have a greater clarity as to the past of what Santa Barbara has been used for, which is the movie industry since at least the 1900s, possibly even the 1800s, and to be greater respectful of private property owners such as my grandmother. Currently, my grandmother, Patricia Ann Leahy, is in control of her father's image, along with Paramount Pictures. I feel that that building has been abused. I also feel like there is a problem within the police force of a lack of knowledge of the conflict between what is our obligation as private property owners and families of getting police service to a private property versus a public property, because with public police, they're paid out of taxpayer dollars and whatever budgets you have for the police. When I, as a homeless resident for now of Santa Barbara or anywhere else, have a problem for which I need the police, my understanding is that if I were a private property owner and I wanted police to show up on what I would deem to be private property, which is most of Santa Barbara, because it is owned by Charlie Chaplin, it is owned by Time Warner Pictures, it is owned by Ray Bradbury, and if you look around, there are several estates. So they're actually private property. My understanding as a private property owner is that we would have to hire like a moonlighting cop who's willing to show up to our defense. I have had a lot of problems since I have been homeless, rather than renting and inside, with threats, where I've been told that if I call the local police, I'm going to be assaulted, and the local police tell me they are too busy, so I would urge...
Thank you, Courtney. Okay. Brian Kenny will be next.
Good afternoon, council members. I would first like to thank you for the unanimous stand you took in August in support of neighborhood preservation on the issue of vacation rentals. At that time, you instructed staff to explore changes to the zoning ordinance to allow home shares. I would strongly urge you to vote to keep the zoning ordinance in place that protects the residential nature of our neighborhoods. A home share ordinance will result in explosive growth in both home sharing and vacation rentals because the city would not and should not employ the invasive enforcement methods that would be necessary to police the ordinance. If you decide today to protect the nature of our residential neighborhoods, I urge, urge you to add a document to the ZIR, signed by new homeowners in residential zones, acknowledging that vacation rentals and home shares are not permitted uses of their new home. Also, I find it interesting that many proponents name the high cost of housing as a reason to support changing the ordinance, while simple economics would tell us that vacation rentals drive prices up, as evidenced by the presence of so many from the real estate industry here today. Thank you.
Bill Dinklage?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for giving us a chance to speak. My name is Bill, excuse me, my name is Bill Dinklage, and I am a homeowner, and rent my property out for short-term vacation rental when we're on vacation. And I have been paying, paying my TOT and TBID, by the way, and I'm licensed. And I agree with what Mike Conway and others have said about how, you know, I don't think we're actually hurting the, or cramping the rental market because we live in our homes, so perhaps some kind of allowance should be made for people who actually live in their home most of the time. We rent only like 20% of the year, or even less, maybe 15%. And it's actually a good solution to the housing shortage, because part of the housing shortage that we have in Santa Barbara is a shortage of affordable housing, and this helps make our house affordable, to be able to rent when we disappear on vacation and allow other people that opportunity. So I recommend, or I suggest that you, I think the staff made a good point, that it's really difficult to make a distinction between the home share and other short-term rentals, and so why don't we just not worry about that distinction, but make more allowance for the short-term vacation rentals? And I think you can do that while preserving the neighborhood quality. I think, as others have made a point, vacation, people who stay in vacation rentals often do so because they, they don't want to have that motel six, or even an expensive luxury hotel experience. They actually are families themselves, they are grandparents who have grandkids who are living in Santa Barbara, they are connected to the community, and they like that neighborhood feel, and when they actually visit our place, we've heard this from our neighbors, they contribute to the neighborly, the neighborly feel more than our house sitting vacant would. So... So, yeah, I think I'm gonna stop there.
It's good, because your time's up. All right. Brad Bennett will be the final speaker. Mr. Bennett? Nope? Okay. Uh, uh, duh, 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 duh. You, you already spoke.
Me? I did not.
You did not? I thought, oh, you have a twin then. You know, you two actually look a whole lot alike, but you're right, you wear a different shirt. Mr. Bennett, you're right.
I was in the back room.
You were.
Thank you for allowing us time to speak today. I just wanted to say quickly, I read the staff report. I was disappointed that it didn't really propose any possible scenarios about how this could work. It just very quickly said, no, this is not possible, here are some problems with enforcement. If I look back over all the meetings, which I've attended all of them and spoken all of them, which is why you may remember me, and the recurring theme really, and the concern seemed to be about preventing the absentee ownership of rentals that were being run for pure profit. There seemed to be less concern about people renting a room or, or renting out things while they're on vacation. The big concern listed in the staff report was about enforcement. I think there's a simple solution, and it's really about just ensuring that the person doing home sharing is the, lists the home as their primary residence. It solves several problems. It just says that those who are renting while they're on vacation, which we don't really seem to be as a problem, there's, there's already some natural limits by how much time they would be doing it, or the person is a permanent residence in the house and living on property, in which case they're there to manage the problem. So I think it would be an easy way to enforce this, it would allow a way to at least give home sharing a try. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that concludes public comment. It's to the council and give direction to staff at this point. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Question for City Attorney. Where do we stand right now on the, regarding cooperation or lack thereof with the marketing operations, whether local or national?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we have issued a number of subpoenas. You've seen four of those come back. We've had one operation refuse to comply with the subpoena. We'll be seeking an order to show cause in Superior Court. We have another 17, rather, 16 subpoenas that have gone out that will be coming back January 12th. That's been the extent of the cooperation we've had. We have had cooperation with individual property owners who have signed settlement agreements. We've had about seven of those, and there are about 18 pending code enforcement cases at the present time. We expect that number to grow, of course, as we gain listings through the subpoena process.
And, and when you say settlement agreements, can you explain what that means?
Our office prepared a form settlement agreement that we are offering in order to resolve the situation with property owners who have been unlawfully renting their property for periods of 30 days or less.
And they agree to no longer do that?
That's correct, and they agree to pay back taxes as appropriate.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, this issue is, really strikes to the core of our job up here, to preserve the community for the residents of the community. And I was struck by what Mr. Muldever said that concluded the, all the work that was done about 10 years ago, looking at visioning for the waterfront, with the statement that Santa Barbara wants to be visitor-friendly but has to be focused on the community first. And we do a really good job, I think, of being visitor-friendly, and folks who are hosting people and representing Santa Barbara well to the international community are doing a great job at that. But there is a tension between that activity, taking care of tourists, and taking care of residents when it comes to housing. And, and housing is different than other things. It is, it is really fundamental to our community. We spent millions and millions of dollars and probably 40 years of public policy struggling with the right balance about housing, and it is, it is not balanced today. As other speakers have said, we have enormous numbers of people that commute on a daily basis to the jobs that we need done in the city of Santa Barbara, simply because there is no place for them to live. And they want different kinds of housing opportunities. They want homes, they want rooms, they want apartments. So the description that, you know, what you think that you're able to offer doesn't impact the housing market simply isn't true. It does. If you're, if you have a home that you are not using all the time, there is something to that. I understand, and I appreciate what the Realtor said about, you know, can't we find a balanced approach that, that represent, recognizes, you know, that somebody going on vacation is different than somebody speculating on apartment building? The problem is, in, in practical terms, how do we do that? And it would require cooperation from the corporations that are involved in this to actually accomplish that. We would need to have shared information, we would need to have trust that in fact, if we were to oppose a limitation on the number of days that somebody might do this, or if we were to oppose a limitation on it being owner-occupied, or if we were to create any kind of regulatory scheme that would actually work, we would have to have cooperation from the hosting services that do that for that to be successful and to not have an impact on the housing market that we can't absorb and we can't manage. Unfortunately, we are not at that place. We don't have that trust. We do not have that ability to have that kind of relationship with these companies at this point in time. Couple of, maybe a month ago, I went to a National League of Cities Conference in Nashville, and I spent a lot of time going to every workshop that I could that talked about this issue, to hear directly from the host sites what their corporate view was of how this works with local governments. And I came away really discouraged about the ability to do this and regulate this in the future, because the, the attitude that I got from the host services was, this is not our business. Our job is just to provide this platform, it's up to the host to comply with the law. It's not our job. I can understand that from their point of view, but that puts us in an absolutely impossible, untenable position to try and precisely regulate this with the kind of scalpel regulation that folks would like to see that could work. So here we are, we're stuck. There isn't anything at this point in time that we can, I, I can see as a path to go down to regulate this in a way that would actually work. So I, I don't feel like we have a choice. I think we just have to enforce the law as it exists today, which says there's a distinction between renting for less than 30 days and more than 30 days. If you rent for more than 30 days, you can do it in residential zones. If you rent for less than 30 days, you can't. We, we're culpable, I think, as a city for having given a confusing message to people through the transient occupancy tax collection and the business license process. I think that was, that was clearly unintentional and, and didn't understand what the ramifications of that would be in the long term, but it has confused people. We have people here who think, I've paid my, my transient occupancy tax, I have a business license, I should be able to continue to do that. We can't continue to do that. That, that the housing crisis is so serious and so severe that we have to get back to the equilibrium that we used to have, where houses were for people to live in and hotels were for places where visitors to stay. So I'm not prepared to move forward with any kind of regulation that would, that would not be successful, that would not achieve its goals, that would, would continue to exacerbate the housing market. This evidence that we got tonight that shows units that should be rented by people that live here, that are being rented in residential neighborhoods to visitors, is, is the, is the most convincing, most persuasive thing I've heard tonight, and I can't go forward with, with any kind of regulation that would allow this to continue.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I have a question for staff. This concerns the, the establishment of vacation rentals in the R4 zone. One of the speakers talked about the difficulties of complying with regulations for hotels because they don't have a reception desk, or they don't have this, or they don't have that. Is there, are there, there aspects of complying with the hotel category that really shouldn't apply to this kind of rental?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francisco, the ordinance is that, that we are applying to those who want to convert a residential use to a vacation rental or a non-residential use are those that we have in place. So the development plan ordinance is a recognition that we are, you know, our limitations on, on growth, on non-residential growth, is that someone is requesting to take some part of that square footage out of the pot for someone else to use. So it's a recognition that it's a non-residential use. We, it may require design review if there's exterior changes, but we don't get into the operation of whether there's a lobby or housekeeping services or, or those types of regulations for vacation rentals. It's really, it's, it's the land use aspect of it that we're regulating, not how they greet their customers or, or really how it operates on the inside.
I see. So the, the time-consuming part that people are talking about is actually getting the permission to do the conversion, not the process of the conversion itself? Is that what you're saying?
It's both. We've really only had one, one property owner to date who has, who we've had a protected discussion with, that we've really dipped into every possible ordinance that could apply. And so it's, it's not just the conversion from residential use to non-residential use. We have to ensure that the adequate parking is provided. We could trigger some building code upgrades, there's water meter requirements if you're trying to operate a non-residential use adjacent to a residential use. Each situation is so different. It, it's hard to say that, that there's one process that someone would go through. Now, if it's a property in a different part of town, a smaller unit that is not trying to have a commercial use right adjacent to a residential use, could perceivably go through the process fairly quickly.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm not clear on that.
Mr. Reel, did you want to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Francisco, I think from, from Ms. Haller's perspective, our process is very convoluted, very complex. It's very expensive and it takes a long time. As City Planner Brooke explained, yes, our dedication of commercial square footage, we're, we're really focused in our general plan, we're very focused on housing and limiting commercial development. If the council at a policy level wanted to say that vacation rentals, home sharing are a different type of land use that would not necessarily be under these certain types of regulations, the council could simplify that process, provided that we could get through the secret process. And we haven't thought through that yet, but it could be, it could be complicated for us to get there, but from a, from Ms. Haller's perspective, definitely, it's very, very difficult and cumbersome. But again, you could give us direction to simplify that, and we would do our best.
Okay. Well, that seems to me a topic worth discussing. I'm not going to be around to discuss it, so that's easy for me to say. But it does seem like an issue, I think, I don't know if I speak for the entire council, but I think that, at least I believed, that the, the allowance of vacation rentals in our four zones was a, it was an acceptable use, just as a hotel is an acceptable use in the R4 zone. So I don't see the value of placing enormous burdens in front of someone who wants to accomplish that.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember, Councilmember Francisco, the counterargument to that, that you've heard previously that you did not hear tonight, are the hoteliers that would say, there needs to be an even playing field between the vacation renters, the home shares, and, and the hotels. The hotels have to have the commercial square footage set aside, and so should the entities that hope to do the same type, conduct that same type of land use that they are.
Okay. Thank you very much. So this is essentially a replay of the discussion that we've already had about this topic. And at our last discussion, I voted not to pursue even looking at the idea of home sharing because it's essentially the same issue. And as staff has pointed out, it would be virtually impossible to distinguish between what we're calling home sharing and what we called VRBOs in the previous meeting. So what happened here is technology changed. The internet and the web suddenly allowed people to very, very easily communicate with people all over the world and become their own hotel, essentially. That possibility wasn't there 20 years ago, though there are people who have been operating things like this in Santa Barbara for 20 years, long before they had web access. But the web is what really changed this. However, what has not changed is the zoning ordinance. That's not new. The zoning ordinance has said for a very long time, Mr. White, 1956, I'm not sure. The zoning ordinance has said for a very long time that commercial uses are not permitted in residential zones. And the reason for doing that is, is very simple. The idea of a residential zone was a place where people could raise families and have a certain expectation of stability in their neighborhood. I think that's still important. I think that, I imagine myself, if the house next to me were a vacation rental, I would feel uncomfortable with it. And I think that that idea of preserving the stability of neighborhoods is so important. So that's why that's in the zoning ordinance, that rentals of less than 30 days are not allowed. It was specifically put into the zoning ordinance to prevent that kind of commercial activity in a residential zone. So I know the technology is out there that has, has allowed this, but our zoning ordinance doesn't. And I think we need to continue with that. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank Councilmember Hart and Francisco for being so eloquent on how they've described the situation, and I agree with them. I would like to thank Leo Kracki and Laura Capps in her email, and Jack Uchifedi for laying out really thoughtful ways to do a home sharing ordinance. And I would be supportive of that if I wasn't first convinced that home sharing is a commercial use in a residential neighborhood. And Mr. Hart, you were so eloquent. I think you should have been a litigator. You almost had me there. But I think it is a commercial use because people are making money off of that operation. Airbnb is making money off of that operation, and I don't support that. We do have a critical housing shortage. I owe it to my locals to look out for their interests, not people who want to come and visit Santa Barbara. And I understand what staff is saying. How nosy and intrusive would you have to be to really figure out what's going on inside of a house? Is it a full-on vacation rental? Are people sharing? Who's there? I get that, yeah. I, I don't think, I don't think it's doable. I support staff in their, in their recommendation. As difficult as it is, I have friends who do home sharing. I'm not sure they're going to be my friends after this, and I have to make the right decision based on what's best for my entire community. And as for the gentleman from San Francisco who said, I, I, what we were talking about was the, the discussion that we had in August, and we were unanimous back in August on the harm that vacation rentals do to the neighborhoods, neighborhood compatibility, and for our housing stock. For that clarification, thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is a, I don't know if wonderfully civil discussion is the right way to say it, but certainly has been, and with little to no exaggeration, which I have to tell all of you is rare up here, often people as advocates go way overboard in an effort to be convincing. You didn't do that, so you have been convincing in a lot of ways. I do think, though, that it's self-evident that if we take homes or rooms off the market, that will boost the rental market and the cost of rental market, and if we put them back on, it will bring it down possibly. It's not a guarantee, but that's the way cause and effect works and economics generally works. From the beginning, as a Realtor, I've been cognizant of the fact that it's a material difference whether the home next to the one you're selling is rented out on a weekly or daily or whatever... daily or whatever basis. It's, in fact, required disclosure by, not by the Association of Realtors, but by most brokers that I've talked to. And that says something. And the reason they're doing that is frankly for liability. If you don't tell your potential buyer that this use goes on next door, you could be in court down the line. So it does mean that without question, this kind of home sharing and short-term rentals has an impact on the neighborhood. Mind you, I see it as enormously beneficial to some, particularly when their circumstances may change with the death in the family or whatever, and it's the only way of retaining, excuse me, the household through a supplemental income. I wish we could solve that problem, but we can't. That's one that individually has to be solved and not by ordinance. So the overriding thing for me is that we retain or maintain the neighborhood that you and I have bought into, and that is first and foremost. And my colleagues are correct in saying that they are going to lose friends. I probably have already lost a few already here today. But our allegiance has to be to the community at large, and I think our decision was correct before and will be correct today that we won't change the ordinance, we'll continue as we were.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have much to add to the comments of my colleagues. I think that Mr. Hart and Mr. Francisco framed the two, there's sort of two major concerns here. Three, the housing imbalance, jobs housing imbalance in the region, the compatibility issues that arise, and third is the, and I, which I think are selective. I know of, I have experienced the situations where the home sharing is compatible, so I know it can be. But it's that inability to make that a citywide, policy-based form of regulation and activity. And since that is so difficult, that's, that makes this effort really not available for us to move forward with. So I will not be supporting home sharing at this point. I do it with pain because I think that there are, there's potential to be compatible and be appropriate. It's just not going to be within the framework of regulation. I think the points made about the fact that this information is not available, there's lack of cooperation, we're talking about subpoenas here in order to get information on these topics, it just makes it an unregulatable situation. So I will not be supporting moving forward with home sharing.
Mr. Rouse?
I guess what bothers me about this conversation as much as anything is pitted as a good versus evil. You know, long-term rental is good, short-term rental is evil. You know, what's best in a neighborhood? But the neighborhood preservation is really the most important thing. And lately, we're dropping a lot of acronyms on neighborhoods. We've had the VRBO discussion in June, we had the RPP discussion earlier today. We've certainly been talking about AUD lately, which has a lot of units with very little parking in their neighborhoods, changing neighborhood characters. And today, we talked about STR. And the bottom line is, and I know my friends in the real estate industry understand this, is when you sell a home or when you buy a home in a certain district or a neighborhood, you have a reasonable expectation that what that neighborhood was purposed for is what it will remain being. And I hear conversations about the new economy, about the sharing economy. Heard about the old white guy problems in the last meeting, but that was about parking, wasn't it? And the bottom line is, is that, yeah, things do change, things do evolve, but it's not everybody's responsibility around you to absorb what you may or may not need for your cash flow needs. I cringe at the idea of creating a regulation that would cause us to be so intrusive in the people's lives as to find out whether or not the primary homeowner really was there, the host was on site, or how many days they did this, or the things that we can barely regulate, the zoning ordinances we have today, the staff needs would be horrendous for this. It's not everybody's responsibilities out there to create an affordable housing situation for everyone. That's not on you, that's more on us, and I'm not sure we're particularly good at it. But what is important for us to do is to preserve what people expect us to preserve. We aren't changing anything, we're not looking to ban anything today. We're being asked to change the law, we're being asked to change what has been established for a long time. I've heard some minor suggestions about what we would do. I've not seen a total proposal about how one of these work. Well, look at the other city, or how do they do it? Well, Santa Barbara is unique in a lot of ways. I wouldn't just accept their blanket, go look at them. And yet, we're being asked today to say, change what you've done, change what you've established for all these years. And I don't think that's very fair. It may be something that works for somebody that just bought a home, trying to make a few extra bucks to meet ends. No, it's a tough town to live in. But is it really fair to those other people who bought, sold, moved into the neighborhoods that they expected to say, well, this is an R1, R2, R3? Now, I do see some room in this discussion on the R4. I think, I think there is an area, and actually, Mr. Hart brought up about, Bob Hart, that is not that Hart, that Hart over there, about potential, what is the definition of a commercial? And maybe, and if it's a sequel issue, yeah, that's going to be long and drawn out. But maybe there are ways to look at that differently because that is set up for, that is what we intended to do in the first place. But I know that's rather complicated, and I know we have brick and mortar hotel people to answer to as well. But for right now, I'm not sure why we want to dive into the Wild West economy. Yes, there's a brand-new thing coming up every other week and how we're going to make money, how we're going to survive. We've got a new app, we've got a new Uber, whatever we're going to do. Great. We still have a zoning ordinance, we still have neighborhoods, we built schools and hospitals and post offices to serve those neighborhoods. And I'm going to have to stick with the neighborhoods and deny the, or support the staff recommendation.
I want to thank everyone for their comments today and for up through today and earlier this year. It's clear, listening to the comments of my colleagues, that it would honestly be a waste of staff time at this point to pursue another ordinance because there's not clearly votes to do anything. And yet, I want to acknowledge that if we don't move forward on any kind of home sharing ordinance, it's not like that's just going to disappear and go away. And I think we need to acknowledge ourselves, you know, the practical nature of what is actually occurring out there. And I think Mr. Francisco said, due to technology in particular, is that this is happening, it has happened. Some have worked in good faith with our request to get a license and pay their TOT, and actually, in some ways, they're being rewarded for that at this point because they're going to be the last group that will be enforced against. So there is a time period there where they technically could still continue, but everyone else is, you know, the enforcement stuff is going to continue moving forward. I do think that we're going to have to grapple with this issue again. I understand today's not the day we're going to ask staff to find an ordinance, but I'm going to go back to where Mr. Hart started of talking about trust and cooperation with people who are connected to organizations like Airbnb or VRBO or about the home sharing aspect. People who have owned their homes and who once in a while, whether their home or not, rent out their space and collect money for it and pay their TOT. I don't think we or staff have received any kind of proposal out there that anyone feels comfortable thinking that it could be enforced well or produced well. If we receive one, my personal opinion would be I'd be willing to look at that, but I'm one of what would be five votes up here. And I think that is the kind of conversation that needs to happen in the next year in the community to see what's out there. I've heard mixed reviews from, or mixed messages, I guess, from various people about how cooperative or uncooperative people connected with Airbnb or other organizations are about trying to, trying to problem-solve something. So I think for today, obviously, there's not the movement to move forward on continuing taking up staff time with their very long laundry list of a number of things to continue working on a home sharing ordinance. I personally think a very narrow, 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 restricted use. At some point, we're going to have to address again anyway, just by virtue, it's going to happen. And we're, we are going to, we are spending a significant amount of money in, through our staff attorney's office as well as community development, on enforcement of things we need to enforce. But there may be that little sliver, should we get some kind of proposal in the future to relook at, but that day's not today. So, and I would agree finally also on the issue of the intrusiveness of it. I mean, yeah, I think issues of privacy and how much is really practical, going back to the practical level, it makes a big, it's a big issue as well. I do think, as some have mentioned, you know, this whole issue about the R4, when we had this issue in August, it was given the impression, at least I had the impression, that there's a process for R4 that could work. And here's, actually, we had a map of the zone of R4s, and if you have a place here, you know you could apply and go to the city and go through a process and get something to happen. Obviously, that's not necessarily the case. It might be easy in some places depending on the location, but there's some complications there. And I'm not sure if that's just opening up a can of worms and changing that ordinance, but I would request at least to figure out, you know, is there another way to try to figure out? If we say that this is an area where some areas are allowed, then is that true or is it not true? And let's just get that clarification because it's sounding like it depends. So that's what I'm hearing through, not just today, but in some correspondence with emails between members of the public and community development staff. So I think, you know, there's a number of you out there that, who have done what the city has asked at this point that can continue up to a point to, you know, have a home sharing type of scenario, but that is going to end unless we get some kind of proposal, and it could be, you know, homegrown here or taking best practices of elsewhere. There's a lot of cities throughout the country, in fact, throughout the world, are looking at this right now. So I'd be willing to keep my eyes and ears open and listen if something comes up, but again, that day is not today. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to take a different tack from what you just said. I'd like a report from staff on enforcement of the decisions that we've made related to vacation rentals and home sharing. I'd like to make sure that the city is going to keep an eye on these operations, and we're looking to protect our housing stock. I'm happy to hear, does someone want to say something now? Or I, however, Mr. Casey, that we can calendar a report back, please.
I think that was already processed from last time, but go right ahead. Yeah, so are you planning to come, right? Just remind us what we said we did, we were going to do in August.
In February, we were planning on bringing back you kind of a status of the enforcement approach. We'll check back in.
Yeah, and I think we are all in agreement about that. Mr. Rouse?
I was going to make a motion, Madam.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to move the staff recommendation, but I'd also like to add at least a preliminary look into the R4 in terms of whether or not it would involve a sequel process, and perhaps even whether or not the potential conversion of residential would involve a commercial designation and therefore be subject to the limitations of a commercial development or if it could be reclassified and what the process would be there. So we could at least take a look to see if it's worthwhile having staff go further in developing an R4. Anyway, that's.
Do you want that in a memo? Do you want that to come back to council? What would you?
I would like that, I would actually like to come back to council because I think this discussion is going to be ongoing, and I think that we should approach it in a public way.
All right, is there a second to that? First?
I'll second it, and I agree that the, is there, to ask the question that, on the R4 issue, is there a nimbler way for R4 to accommodate this use?
Better motion.
Okay. Did you want to add to that, Mr. Beal? Go ahead.
Yes, if I may, Madam Mayor and members of the council, just to be clear, the zones in which the vacation rentals may be able to be established is not limited to just the R4. There are other zoning districts, so I just want to make sure that we're clear. And these are typically, well, it's R4, CL, CP, C1, C2, CM, HRC1, HRC2, HRC2/OC, and the M1 zones.
Okay. But the R4 was the only residential zone? I think that's why we were calling it the R4.
Correct, yeah. That would correspond with the map that we showed to you back in, I believe, June.
Okay.
Yeah, what we're talking about here, if I may, is the, we have the, the R4, of course, is the residential that drifts into commercial, and the others are the averse of that. That is to say, they're the commercial where residential is feasible and so forth and so on, but can accommodate hotels and other commercial uses as well.
Madam, if I could just make one comment as well. If in your spare time you wanted to look at the map where the average unit density size incentive program for residential development occurs, it's in these exact same areas. So that's something to take under consideration. If we should be relaxing our permitting for the conversion of residential to a vacation rental use in the R4 and commercial zones, that's exactly the same place that we are creating these very strong incentives to develop residential uses. So it kind of works at counter purposes from my perspective.
Okay, well, I think we're just asking for information at this point, so.
Right.
Right, so the motion or in second, or do you want just the R4 or all the ones that were listed?
All, please. I think the concept can come back to us and we can discuss the concept and then see whether.
All eligible, I think zones would be.
Whether it warrants further action.
And I think the intent behind this motion, if I'm understanding, is to get clarification about what we had talked about earlier this year, what's possible and what the process is and what the ramifications are, so.
Yes. Madam Mayor, if I might, I want to be very clear with the council that this is not an assignment to go find a way to modify the existing process, it's an analysis of what that process is. That may present opportunities for you to modify it.
Correct.
And that's the intention of the motion, thank you.
Correct. Mr. Hart?
Well, I can't support the motion with that addition. I think that this is the same slippery slope that we did before. I think we're going to end up doing exactly the same thing that we just did today, that there are significant reasons why it's not easy to convert an R4 residential property into a hotel, that those are in the code. That's why it's difficult. That's exactly as Ms. Lamone described, this is the tension between housing for residents and hotels for visitors. And it's a high bar to build a hotel, and it, because we want to continue to preserve housing. So opening up this can of worms without acknowledging that's exactly what we're proposing to do, to reduce housing in favor of visitor-serving resident, or rental units, is just continuing to do the same thing and send confusing messages to the public.
Okay, well, I understood this to be an analysis and report back, so. Mr. Francisco?
Madam Mayor, just one point. If we, if we take no action at all, that's it. We're not telling staff, I mean, we don't technically have to do anything. We could take no action, not give any direction to staff, and they would stop looking at the home sharing.
Meaning let a motion just die and then status quo is?
Exactly.
Mr. Rouse?
Well, we could do that, but we did, what we are lacking here is some specific information. I think there is some confusion, at least amongst, you know, a couple of us up here would like to find some of these things out, whether it comes back in a memo or back to council. But the mayor did put out that we, you know, if people have proposals, we could listen to them in the future. So right now, we know we don't have to do anything. And I do, I'm not looking to create a new zone, but to find out what might be possible in our existing zoning.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Let's keep it simple and keep it to a memo and keep it off the table here and do as what we're saying before and just pass, we'll get the information, but we won't be giving any false hopes here.
That would, I believe, require Mr. Rouse when withdrawing his motion. Is that correct? Or, Mr. Kellon?
Madam Mayor, I understood the motion to include a report back to a council meeting. If you want just a memo, we would need a change in the motion.
Okay, I'll stipulate to that change in memo.
And I'll agree to that.
So we're just now asking for a memo to come back on the zones that were just listed as it relates to what the process is in terms of a conversion to a vacation rental? And that's it? And that's all, and that's all the motion is? Mr. Hart?
So we're asking staff to do a bunch of work to describe the process where we would change the R4 zone to make it easier to build hotel units.
No, we are asking staff to write a memo to explain the current process of what is allowed in the R4 and other zones as was described. That's it.
What's allowed in the R4 zone?
What is allowed and what the process would be. We need some, the motion is, is to get a memo about what the current process is in the zones that were mentioned as it relates to a conversion to vacation rentals, not to go through any analysis of major changes, just to get an analysis of what is allowable and what the process is, because I believe there's been. and what the process is, because I believe there's been some confusion about what was perceived to be a relatively easy process, and maybe it's not as easy as we once thought.
Well, I don't, I don't think it was ever proposed to be easy. It has always been difficult. And if it's just a memo that's going back to council members so that they have additional information, I can support that.
Okay. All right, so we know what the motion is from Rouse and White? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have one more item here, if you could read that item. Actually, we'll go to council member committee assignment reports. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember White and I are participating in updating the zoning ordinance, the NZO. We're doing a very good job, and we were looking at development standards. This was yesterday. I went to the, I went to the local hero's luncheon through the Independent, that was awesome. And then there was a couple of serious community workshops last week. One was on the student dormitory up on the mesa, and the other one was on the bicycle master plan. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, I attended the Fall Convention of the Association of California Water Agencies in Palm Desert, and I focused, I found it a very useful conference. I focused on the workshops and presentations on financing water infrastructure. We actually had Joshua Hagmark and Kelly Dyer were there, and we sort of divided up the areas of interest so that I think we covered all of the, the interesting presentations at that conference, and I think it's all very useful information.
Mr. White?
I don't think I have anything, the, the NZO, the new zoning ordinance project is in full sway. We meet next Monday for our next, is that our final chunk? I don't think it, it probably won't be the final chunk, but that, that project is in full sway, and we look forward to completing that and bringing it back to council.
Mr. Hachikas?
Milpus Community Association lit up a 25-foot Christmas tree with some really remarkable lights. It changes color, it goes around, it's in its whole permanent stuff, or rather, it fixed, but it was great. Thank you.
And I want to acknowledge the downtown Santa Barbara for a great holiday parade on Friday, and I hear the parade of lights were very successful as well, so, so kudos to the waterfront department. Okay, we now have item 19. Conference with city attorney, anticipated litigation. Thank you, and we will adjourn from closed session until next week. Thank you.